Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 30A, article 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Shrewsbury Board of Selectmen will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. All meetings and hearings listed in the agenda will also be done so through remote participation. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at www.shrewsburyma.gov/coronavirus. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen or watch may do so by visiting www.shrewsburymediaconnection.org. No in-person attendance or members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post the town's website, on the town's website, an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. To participate in the public portion of this meeting, dial 1-747-248-7354 and enter the following PIN: Please mute your device until the Chair of the Board of Selectmen addresses your agenda item or opens the meeting to public comment. This is Beth Cassavant, the Chair. Please permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. John LeBeau.
Yeah, I'm here.
John Samia.
Present.
Maurice DiPaolo.
Present.
I know Jim's here because I see his phone, but he is muted. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Kevin Mizikar.
Present.
Valerie Clemmie. I know Valerie is here also.
Present.
Madam Chairman.
Anticipated, yes, Mr. Kane. You're here, aren't you?
I have been speaking.
Oh, you were muted. Okay.
Probably a smart move.
We are all set. We knew you were here. Anticipated speakers on the agenda, please respond in the affirmative. Christopher Mena.
Present.
Keith Lindem. Joseph Duggan. They may be joining us a little bit later. Their appointment isn't until later. Attorney Jeremy Cohen. Edward Hedberg. Jane Hedberg. Noah Springer, or any attorney representing the Springers. Sure, they'll be joining us later on in the meeting. I'm going to just move on. This open meeting of the Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely, as I said before. If we are conducting this meeting through Google Hangouts, please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to share your screen, unless asked by the chairperson or a staff person. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Just have a few ground rules to go over. And then we'll be turning to the first item on the agenda. I, as the Chair, will introduce each board member or staff member who has the lead role for the particular item or guest speaker associated with the item on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will then go down the line of members first and then to staff members, inviting each to provide any comments or questions. I will then call upon the members to offer a motion and then for a second. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking and that unless a document is being shared, your camera feed is triggered by your speaking or background noise. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For others in attendance, please hold until your name is called to present. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Remember that unless a document is being shared, your camera feed is triggered by background noise. After your presentation, members of the board or committee will be given the opportunity to ask questions. For our public hearing, after members have spoken, the Chair will afford public comment as follows. I will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the Chair has a list of all public commenters, I will call on each by name and afford time for comments. For any response, please wait until the Chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in co-locally with other members, please do so through the Chair, taking care to identify yourself. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. All right. Now move on to item number one on our agenda, which is to approve bills, payrolls, and warrants.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. I'm going to take a roll call vote. Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo.
Aye.
Mr. Kane.
Aye.
And myself, aye. Item number two is to approve the minutes of the June 23, 2020, and June 30, 2020, meetings.
Move approval.
Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo.
Aye.
Mr. Kane.
Aye.
Very good. Myself, aye. Item number three is announcements and reports. We have a few this evening. The first is to announce that FEMA has provided an allocation of the AFG Supplemental Program awards. The Shrewsbury Fire Department will receive a grant in the amount of $46,563.64 for emergency medical personnel protective equipment and disinfection, decontamination supplies and equipment used in their responses to COVID-19 incidents. This was a collaboration with Shrewsbury, being the lead on the application, but includes the towns of Westboro and Northboro. The PPE will be distributed between the three towns. So thank you to the grant writer and chief for always looking for ways to secure funding for needs within the department and for finding a way to collaborate with our neighboring communities on this. We also have three retirements to acknowledge this evening. The first is Selco General Manager Michael Hale. Michael Hale served the town for 32 years in various capacities, but most recently as a general manager for Selco. And I know that I speak for the board when I say the Town Hall will feel Michael's absence both as a colleague and a friend. And when I think of Michael Hale, I think of the relationships he built within the community, his outstanding management of Selco, including the construction of the solar array on the cap portion of the landfill and his unwavering commitment to the residents and the ratepayers. The board is extremely grateful for your service and will truly miss working with you. Mr. Mizikar, I thought you had a few comments that you wanted to make also.
I do, thank you. Yeah, I really appreciated the opportunity to work with Mr. Hale throughout his career at the town. He, of course, worked the majority of that time within the Town Manager's Office, serving in various roles, including his longest tenure with the town as the Assistant Town Manager. To be quite frank with the Board of Selectmen, as I considered applying for the position of Town Manager now three and a half years ago when it was announced, the first question that I had from the recruiter when I talked to him is Mike Hale applying for the position. Mike Hale certainly would have made a fine Town Manager if he ever chose to pursue and accept an offer of which he had some in his career. So Mike was a huge help to me. Certainly, being able to have frank and open conversations with him in his office got me up to speed much quicker than I would have been able to without his presence. He's a true leader and executive of the community, and I will miss working with him so closely. Thank you for the opportunity.
Welcome. Any other board members wishing to say anything? We also have two other retirements. One is Sergeant Alfred Pratt, who was with the Shrewsbury Police Department for 27 years. The other is Sharon Horn, who's retiring after 27 years with the Water and Sewer Department. And when I see long-term retirements of employees that have spent their whole career with Shrewsbury, I'm reminded of the culture within our town departments and how that's so responsible for the quality of services that our residents enjoy here in town. So I'd like to thank all of the retirees for their long-term commitment and dedication to the town, and I wish on behalf of the board the best for them in their future endeavors. Hopefully, some time for some relaxation and pursuits of pleasurable activities. And that brings us to item number four, which is the Town Manager's Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of updates for the board this evening under my general report. I'd like to formally announce to the board this evening that Kevin Anderson has been selected and we are finalizing paperwork for the position of Chief of Police for the community. Mr. Anderson started with the Shrewsbury Police Department in August of 1994 and has served in every rank that we have within the department. And what's also notable about his career trajectory is that he's held all three of the lieutenant positions that are possible within the organization, which includes Services Lieutenant, Operations Lieutenant, and most recently Detective Lieutenant. Lieutenant Anderson did a fabulous job throughout the course of the interview process. He already had provided a one-year strategic plan that he had laid out for his vision for the department. And I'm quite confident from my prior work experience with him and the interactions that we've had since July 1 and his appointment to that position that he's the right person to enhance community engagement, which is something that I know this board is focused on and the community, and quite frankly, the nation is focused on when it comes to policing. So we're fortunate to have Chief Anderson on board. We'll be finalizing everything related to his contract by the end of this week and keep going with the great progress and momentum that he's already built in his first couple of weeks of the job. I also wanted to take the opportunity to talk a few minutes about Town Meeting. I know there'll be a longer conversation about that in upcoming agenda item. Staff is going to work very diligently over the coming weeks to record detailed presentations and conversations about each and every one of the 41 warrant article items. Our goal in doing that is providing the opportunity for Town Meeting members to view this in advance of the meeting along with the materials that will be mailed out to them and become familiarized with what our approach is and be able to develop questions if they have any. And hopefully, we'll answer most of them to move expeditiously through the Town Meeting more given the challenges that we face with COVID-19. So we'll be spending quite a bit of time over that and partnering with SMC to make that production and make it available well in advance of Town Meeting so individuals can watch it through the various SMC means. And then also just wanted to acknowledge the hard work of the police station, police, and municipal campus building committee. They've gotten underway and already have three meetings under their belt, getting up to speed with the OPM, the architect, and staff on the preliminary aspect of the feasibility study. It's great to see such hard work and momentum being built for this very worthwhile project, which focuses on the replacement of our 1972 police station. And I look forward to having more conversations with the board and, of course, Selectmen DiPaolo being on that committee and updating the board as we make our way throughout this process. So a lot of work's been done, a lot of work to go, but we're building great momentum. So I think that's it for my report at this time, and I look forward to updating the board on any COVID-related items in the coming agenda item.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. That brings us to, oh, excuse me, Mr. Kane. Yes, go ahead.
Since the manager mentioned an item on Town Meeting, I just had a question. I've been picking up some, it seems to be someone is framing the conversation regarding the rezoning of land on Route 70, the old Worcester Sand and Gravel location, as an opportunity that the town had to buy the land for aquifer protection or in some way acquire that land. Could the Town Manager validate that assertion or advise us that consistent with my memory, that was never offered to the town at all? It was simply a private transaction amongst parties?
Madam Chair, if I may, yeah. To Selectman Kane's question, the answer is no. The town was never afforded the opportunity to purchase the property. In fact, the first conversation that I had was with the developer, or the current owner, who was already under contract at that time or was nearing the final stages of his due diligence after several conversations with the prior owner. Quite fortunately, though, the new owner has been very open to the town's request in getting our Zone 1 protection as they progress through their design and determine exactly how they're going to redevelop that site. And those conversations are ongoing with the new owners. But I'll also just point out that that land, I believe, was acquired for somewhere between $7 and $10 million, which was quite a price tag that I don't see the town having the resources to pursue, even if it were an option. But that was never presented to us.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
All right. There's no other questions. We're going to move on to number five, which is the budget report. So turn it over to you again, Mr. Mizikar.
Sure, just some general updates, if I may, with regards to the budget. So we are working diligently in finalizing the fiscal year 21 budget document as a whole. And we are prepared nearing the ability to send that out to the board for your detailed review and consideration. That will come out in the form of fiscal projection one, and I hope to do so no later than Friday of this week. And look forward to a conversation with the board at your meeting next Tuesday, since we have an irregular schedule, an extra board meeting coming up. So we'll get into details of that. I can tell you that we closed out fiscal year 20 in a much compromised revenue position, but met, I think, minimum expectations, slightly beat the budgeted amount for local receipts. We collected about 98.2% of the billed property tax revenue, which, given current circumstances, is a rather normal but not impressive year. So we certainly have both timing and ongoing revenue issues that we will have to deal with and are prepared to deal with in a fiscal year 21 plan that we will send a revised copy to the board later this week. That's it for the general update.
Brings us to item number six, unless there are any questions or comments from the board. Item number six is to review and act on the monthly expenditure plan for August 2020 for the General Fund, Water Services Fund, Sewer Fund, Pay It Fund, Stormwater Fund, and Peg Access Fund, and authorize the electronic submission of the plan in accordance with the Division of Local Services Bulletin 2020-6. And as you recall, board members, we're adopting the so-called 1/12 budget until we're able to convene for our annual Town Meeting. And so this would be the expenditure plan for the coming month. Mr. Mizikar, would you like to add anything?
Yes, I would. I'll just summarize, and I'd be happy to share my screen if the board has any questions with regards to the amounts we're allocating for each department. This total request is for $14,177,335 for the month of August. I would just remind the board members that should we convene Town Meeting, as we hope that Town Meeting's approval of the budget will essentially eviscerate all prior monthly budgets that were in place and will have to abide by that spending plan. However, as you know, in our diligence together, the this monthly plan is based upon the full budget that we intend to present to Town Meeting once we get there. So again, it's a $14 million spending plan for August of 2020.
Board members, questions or comments? I'm seeing none. We can move on to a vote. Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Actually, I'm sorry. I'll take a motion.
Yes, move approval.
Second.
Now we can move on to a vote. Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo.
Aye.
Good job. Mr. Kane.
Aye.
And myself, aye. Okay, that brings us to item number seven, which is the coronavirus COVID-19 report from the Town Manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this evening, I do not have slides up. I feel that, just make some comments and then we'll be able to move on with the rest of the meeting, since we have a heavy agenda. I do want to report to the board that since your last meeting of June 23, we have 13 additional positive cases within the community and an average daily rate of .93 new cases per day. Those 13 cases bring us to a total of 329 positive cases since our first case was identified on March 19. It pushes down the average number of cases per day to below three, which is the first time we've achieved that level since early April, which is a strong and favorable trend that we need everyone's support in continuing to achieve. As so many public and private leaders have talked about recently and we're seeing play out in many other parts of the country, the virus has not left us, and everyone needs to continue their significant and due diligence in this matter so that we can continue this closer-to-normal activity for as long as possible and hopefully never have to retreat from the phase of the reopening that we're in. With that 2.99 trend, I'll remind the board that our highest weekly trend was just over seven cases per day the week of April 29 through, or the time period, yeah, the week of April 29 through May 5. So significantly improving and moved beyond half of that other seven-day high. And we're very proud of everyone for doing everything that they can within the community to do this. Further, the Town Hall is now reopened to the public consistent with the governor's Phase 3 announcement. It's open to the public by appointment only, and appointments can be made by contacting the individual department if you wish to conduct business. We've been in that open by appointment now for, this is the second week. The Town Clerk's Office is the busiest office in doing a lot of their legal notary and quite happily marriage intentions and licensure at their office. So a bit of a silver lining that they're so busy doing that. So that's the end of my report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, board members? I just think it's important to note that we are on a weekly reporting of coronavirus, new coronavirus cases within the community. I know the first week that that changed, I had received a few calls from people wondering why the number was so high for a day and then having to let people know that we're reporting by the week now. So keep up the good work out there, everyone. Item number eight is a 7:10 meeting with Christopher Mena. Now, are we able to start this because it's a meeting? Or do I need to wait until 7:10, Mr. Mizikar?
No, we can proceed with the meeting with Mr. Mena. Well, we would have to hold off on any of those following.
Hearings, correct. Okay, perfect. That's what I thought. Okay, so we have a 7:10 meeting with Christopher Mena, Town Moderator, to discuss the time, date, and location of the annual Town Meeting. A great deal of work has been taking place to find a safe way to conduct our annual Town Meeting. The board is grateful to have Mr. Mena in his role for keeping us up to date on what other communities are doing and what he's learning through his discussions with other moderators. Mr. Mizikar, do you have anything to add before Mr. Mena takes over?
I'm happy to continue our work with the moderator, as you said, and allow him to, I think, review the plan that we've worked together on with regards to that time, date, and location. And just acknowledge at this time also the work of staff, including Keith Bodinger, who's had the staff lead along with Angela Snell in the Public Facilities Division of the DPW, and just special acknowledgement and thanks to Mark Sarah for also his diligence and helping us put a plan together that will be effective on the ground for those in attendance. But with that, I will turn it back to the Chair, to the moderator.
Okay. Mr. Moderator.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. Whenever you're ready, we're ready to hear what you have to share with us.
Well, I know there are several topics of discussion tonight, including reconsidering the date and location of the annual Town Meeting following the notice of recession and continuance, which I made in agreement with the Board of Selectmen following your meeting two weeks ago, and also considering the issue of whether the quorum for our annual Town Meeting should be reduced in accordance or as permitted, not required, by one of the emergency statutes that was passed by the legislature this spring in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. And then finally, to talk about what other towns are doing in conducting their annual Town Meetings and to try to work with those of you who have already been involved and who will become involved in making the best plans possible for our actual Town Meeting. And I'm happy to be part of this working group. I've been in contact with numerous Town Moderators and other town government officials over the past several months as they have prepared for and conducted in many instances their annual Town Meetings, both indoors and outdoors, on weekdays and weekends, both live and in person and virtually through video conference technology. And I think it's fair to say that this is all completely new for most towns, that virtually every town has managed to survive their annual Town Meeting in whatever form it has taken and reported back that not only were the Town officials, employees, and volunteers doing an outstanding job in pulling together all of their resources to make sure that the Town Meetings would be held in conformity with the law and also with full participation by all concerned, but that also people really did seem to be interested, maybe had their interest renewed in Town Meeting this year because of the unusual circumstances and in many cases, the unusual locations and means of conducting the Town Meeting. So I'm happy to participate in the conversation with you tonight. If you'd like to address the potential change of date and location first, that's fine with me, or the quorum issue or anything else that any of you folks on the Board of Selectmen would like to discuss first.
Why don't we start with the date, time, and location, and we'll hold the quorum until the 7:15 public hearing?
Okay. Well, as you know, the current announced date and location of the annual Town Meeting is Wednesday, July 29, at Shrewsbury High School. There have been a number of discussions since that notification was made. And by the way, many thanks to Town Clerk Sandy Wright and others, including Shrewsbury Media Connection, for their efforts in getting the notice out to not only to Town Meeting representatives but also to the town in general. And so I think it's fair to say that virtually everybody now knows that the Town Meeting, the current date for Town Meeting is July 29. The discussions that I've participated in since then have made it more and more clear that the public health advisories, both local, state, and national, are all adamantly discouraging large group meetings from being held in indoor locations. That's been certainly the state of advice going back to the spring months and for better or for worse, that advisory has not changed in any significant way, even during the past month, as the numbers have gone down in at least our part of the country. And so I think that we all seem to be moving towards the inevitable conclusion that we would be better advised to hold the meeting in an outdoor location and that we wait a little bit longer in order not only to be able to make the best plans possible for the annual town meeting, but also to take advantage of best practices that are going on in other towns and have enough time to really get all of our ducks in a row and make sure that we're as ready as we can be. So with that, I'll certainly express my opinion that one of the dates that has been discussed is Saturday, August 8th, to start in the morning rather than in the afternoon or evening and have the meeting run from 8:30 or 9:00 AM until it's concluded. And of course, we'll take as meant, we'll take all available steps in order to economize our time and make sure that the meeting is held, is conducted as efficiently and quickly as possible. So I'll throw that date out, knowing that a number of us have already discussed it and say that I'm fully in favor of moving the meeting a few weeks further to the date and time and the location. An outdoor location on the Shrewsbury Middle School campus seems to be a a good location, one that's convenient to parking, convenient, accessible to the two middle school buildings and some of the facilities inside those buildings and right equipment setup. As I know, many of you have been already looking into, I think that we can have a successful town meeting and begin and conclude it in one day.
Thank you. Comments from the board? Questions?
Madam Chair.
Mr. LeBeau.
Well, I have no issue with continuing it. I think that actually helps us a little bit with this 1/12 budgeting because once we do have the town meeting, we're locked in. I agree with the concept of being outside and if, and I do see the value of the location with proximity to the, to two buildings rather than one, that we could actually split up people if they need to use the services of the buildings. So I have, I see no reason why not to push the meeting back a little further. I don't think we have any pressing items that need to be voted on, you know, in July, late July, rather than in early August. So I'm supportive of postponing and holding the meeting on the Saturday as suggested outside at the middle school campuses. Oh, yeah, is that right? At the middle school camps.
Correct. Mr. Kane, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Earlier on, did I pick up a rumor around town that we were thinking of SAC Park where there was shade? Or was that just that a rumor?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. DiPaolo.
Mr. Kane, yes, that was something that we looked at. After looking at it, even though it seems like there's a lot of room there, when Mr. Baldinger was attempting to lay it out with the proper separations, it wasn't, it was not going to work out. And so that's how we ended up with the idea of the middle school campuses. But I'm not, I'm not sure if I missed it when Mr. Mena was discussing the new date, but we are going to have a large, a large tent so that people are protected for the sun, assuming that it's a nice warm August day. But it wasn't gonna, it wasn't going to work out. And it just seemed like it made more sense to go to the middle school campuses where we had large, flat pieces of land that we could set up on.
Okay, thank you very much for the clarification. So is this envisioned on the paved surface or on one of the ball fields?
If I might again, no, it's gonna be, it would, it's possible it would be out in the front of Oak because it has permanent power there, but it may be in the back. It could be on the fields, yes.
And just to follow up on that, if it's on the field and we've had rain, how would someone who uses a wheelchair or have other limitations on mobility experience in the event we had, you know, heavy rains as we did at different times today?
Madam Chair.
Yep, go ahead, Mr. Mizikar.
So the, we've, we've gone through a quote process with tent companies and all companies will have to provide planks, ADA, or mobility assisted planks to a access the tents and we'll make accommodations for individuals that way.
Well, that's great. Thank you very much. And what is the estimated cost of the tent?
The tent itself is about $14,000. That includes the 100 by 140 tent, an additional 20 by 40 tent and all chairs, set up, the planking and the stage that will be required.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Mena.
Yes, just to follow up on what Mr. Mizikar said for Mr. Kane, further answer to Mr. Kane. We, one of the reasons for having an outdoor location that's close to an indoor facility, in this case, two indoor facilities, is that virtually all the towns that have had outdoor town meetings this spring and summer have made some indoor space available for individuals who either for reasons of health or problems with the weather or the need to possibly go inside to use restroom facilities, have proximity to those buildings and have set up actual areas for people to sit in during the entire meeting or for parts of the meeting rather than just to use the buildings nearby to go in and out. So that's one of the things that's under consideration is to have certain areas set up, both outdoors, under the tent, and inside one or both of the buildings where we would be able to accommodate anyone with any special circumstances, whether it's mobility or health or breathing or inability to wear a mask, et cetera. So we're hoping that we can accommodate virtually everyone who attends in some fashion, indoors or outdoors.
Well, thank you very much for the further explanation.
Madam Chairman.
Mr. LeBeau.
Couple of questions. What do we see as the socially distant capacity of the tent? How many people can we get in there?
Of the large tent, 100 by 140 is 300 occupants, six feet apart.
Okay, that certainly should handle it. What, and could you just describe a little bit more about the the sides of the tent? I mean, how open are the walls, so-called walls, gonna be?
100%. It'll mainly just be a a staked weather, stable tent that will, you know, may have, you know, a little bit of the top pulled down over the side, but there'll be no sidewalls, free flow of air.
Very good. Thank you.
Anyone else with comments or questions?
Oh, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Just if I can add, one of the, the, right up there with the tent in terms of importance of of resources for the meeting would be, would be a sound system that would be essentially state-of-the-art. And I know that there are vendors out there that that have that capability. I've heard from a number of other moderators that from, from the very good sound systems to the very poor ones that were used during their town meetings and it certainly, they're certainly capable of having a sound system that will allow everyone to hear and that will provide some supplementation for people who need it. But I'm optimistic that the sound, which is as important certainly as having the cover for weather purposes, will be able to handle that and to everyone's, most everyone's satisfaction.
I think it's also important to note that Mr. Mizikar has been conferring with local public health officials to make sure that we are providing the safest possible environment in which to hold the town meeting as well. And I think with that combined with the presentations that you mentioned in your earlier report that town meeting members would have access to prior to the meeting, just finding ways to reduce the length and duration of the time that we are together, but still being able to get the work done that we need to get done is what's driving most of the decisions that are being made right now. Thank you, Mr. Mena, for your comments and your response. Mr. LeBeau, did you? You look like you're trying to jump in.
I do. I have another question.
Go ahead.
The moderator just made reference to the sound system and he was primarily addressing, you know, people to be able to hear. I'm sure there's been planning done, but I think it might be helpful for folks just to hear it. What's the plan if town meeting members or members of the public want us to speak?
The Madam Chair, if I may.
Okay, either one of you.
So the plan is to have stationary microphones as our primary means for individuals, town meeting members, or members of the public to speak. So those stationary microphones would be situated such that when any individual was at the microphone, that they would be appropriately distanced from anyone in the seating area and that aisles would be appropriately distanced for those individuals to walk. So we have prepared for that and some alternative to that if that's not feasible for each and every individual.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else, board members?
Well, Madam Chairman, I'm seeing we got a minute or two before the hearing. I'd just like to note, as you know, that there's a myriad of small items that come into play on this and the working group has been addressing all of these, from the, from the small items to the big items, having water available, having the check-in stations separated so that as people come in, they're not all bunched up trying to get their name checked off. Having masks available, having first aid stations if necessary because of the heat. So there's a lot of small items, a lot of detail that actually goes into this. And I think having the benefit of having other town meetings, our other towns go before us, we've got to learn a lot of the best practices and a lot of the practices that we shouldn't do. So I, my sense is we're going to be working on this right up until, well, probably that morning, making sure that we get everything right. But it's quite a list of things we have to do, but if other towns can do it, I'm sure that we can. So anyways, we'll just keep going and make sure we get it done right.
Thank you. It's a really good point.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Mena.
Would you, would this be the appropriate time for me to ask the board if we have, if we are in agreement about the change of date and location so that in following the requirements of the statute, Chapter 53 of the Acts of 2020 and and which amended Chapter 39, Section 10A, I have to issue another declaration of recess and continuance in consultation with local public safe or healthy, public health officials and the Board of Selectmen. So I guess I would request not necessarily your vote, but a sense of the board that this is something that you'd all like to do and certainly, and Mr. Mizikar as well. And that if that, if that is the case, then I will issue another notice tomorrow and send it to Town Clerk Wright and ask her to follow the same procedures in notifying town meeting members and in some of the other, you know, sources we have of getting the word out.
Definitely, Mr. Mena. That was exactly where I was heading next. And I do believe I'm getting a sense of the board that we are in favor of this plan. Is there anyone who is not in favor of what Mr. Mena is planning to do? So I think that it's very important that you move ahead with your responsibilities now and getting the word out to the public because we're going to have a town meeting, we're going to need town meeting members there. And the sooner people know the date, the better they can plan for such a, such a thing. So I appreciate your help in, once again, doing all of those things that you have to do to get the word out to people.
Okay, thank you. And just one further point of clarification in terms of the location for purposes of putting it in the notice. My understanding is that if we use the phrase, the Oak Middle, Oak and Sherwood Middle School Campus or words to that effect, that that will cover us in case the location ends up being in either the front field in front of Oak Middle School or the recreational field or fields behind Oak and between Oak and Sherwood. I understand that all of those locations have the same address of 45 Oak Street.
Yes, that's my understanding as well. And I also think that we will be doing quite a bit of work to make sure that it's very clear to people when they arrive where they need to be going and how they need to be moving through so that it's distanced and spaced appropriately. And I also think that really big tent will help people know exactly where we're holding the meeting. So yes, that is my understanding as well.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. That brings us to item number nine, which is a 7:15 public hearing with Chris Mena, town moderator, to consider and possibly act on a quorum level adjustment of town meeting quorum requirements for the 2020 annual town meeting pursuant to Section 7 of Chapter 92 of the Acts of 2020. So with that, I'm going to open the hearing and then turn it over to Mr. Mizikar for an explanation.
I'm sorry, was that to me, Madam Chair?
Yes, yes. Yeah, it's open and you're up. No problem.
I apologize. So as Mr. Mena previously stated, there have been a series of general laws that have been passed to enable municipal operations throughout these challenging times and during the state of emergency. And one of those provisions enables the Board of Selectmen with the approval of the moderator to reduce the standing quorum that exists for the individual municipality to conduct the business of town meeting, which is our legislative body. And since Shrewsbury is a representative town meeting of 240 members, that requires 121 individuals to be present in order to conduct a town meeting. So this provision is not aimed at trying to reduce the number of people that we want to have a town meeting. It is merely a recognition and desire of the town that if we're going to put all this effort into going through all that planning activities and expending funds that once we assemble on site, that we're able to conduct the business that we need to in order to keep the town operating. So the board has before it this evening the ability to reduce the number of members required for the quorum down to 10% of that standing quorum amount, which would be 13 individuals. Certainly not the recommendation that I have and that I know that the moderator or the Board of Selectmen would desire to see, but I know you all will have a fruitful conversation about the appropriate number. But it's really, again, targeted ensuring that once we all get on site, that we are confident that we'll actually be able to conduct that business for the benefit of the entire town. So it would require a vote of the Board of Selectmen and then acknowledgement and approval of that specific number from the moderator. It's more than convenient and we're grateful to have Mr. Mena here with us for the meeting to do so.
Thank you. Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here from the public that's wishing to be heard? Give people an opportunity to unmute if they are here for the hearing.
Madam Chair, just a reminder.
Go ahead, Mr. Mizikar.
Just a reminder to anyone on a, on a cell phone or a phone that it's *6 to unmute yourself if you need that opportunity.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Could you please state your name and address?
Sure, it's Jason Molina.
Sure, it's Jason Molina, 31, which is at Avenue Shrewsbury.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to, to give the opportunity to speak about this topic tonight. Certainly, you know, we all want to see a safe town meeting occur. I think, in thinking back at this opportunity about how we have a meeting, I think one of the fair ways to approach it could be is to reduce the quorum number relative to the number of town meeting members who are aged 60 or older. And that information, I believe, is readily available at the clerk's office for those folks that are registered voters, obviously, which means everybody. So, you know, that could be a way to objectively reduce that number. Of course, you wouldn't have the number tonight for that consideration, but if that could be an approach, if you guys see that favorable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Molina. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Again, if you are on a cell phone, you would need to use *6 to unmute yourself. I assume that we have heard from all that would like to make a comment regarding the possible adjustment to the quorum levels for town meeting. Can I have a motion then to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Take a roll call vote. Mr. Lebo.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo.
Aye.
Mr. Kane.
Aye.
Myself, aye. Okay. Board members, thoughts, comments on the quorum?
Madam Chairman.
Mr. Lebo.
Well, I spoke about this, I think we touched on this a little bit at our last meeting. I'm entirely comfortable with reducing quorum. As I previously mentioned, forgetting COVID, many, many communities, open town meeting communities have incredibly small quorums and they still do their business. So, I'm fine with 61. I'm fine with, I just think we need to be cognizant of the reality that faces us and I think it's wise to reduce the number from 121. As Mr. Mizikar mentioned, we don't want to spend all this money and do all this work and then wind up with less than a quorum there. And if we have adverse weather, that could affect that. If there's any, you know, we all know if there's any major changes relative to the disease, that could change that. I mean, there's so many variables. So, I think by reducing the quorum, you know, I'm still hopeful that we'll have far more than 121 town meeting members there, but under the circumstances, I am entirely supportive of this.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Samia.
I agree with our colleague, Mr. Lebo, about reducing quorum at a slightly different number. I've thought a lot about this. I propose that we reduce quorum to 80 or approximately one-third less than we have now. And what I'm thinking is it just balances our ability to do business and given all the considerations that we've talked about, we're clearly in unprecedented time, but also assuring adequate representation of all the precincts. So, I'm comfortable reducing it, but just a slightly higher number at 80.
Other comments?
Madam Chair.
Mr. DiPaolo.
I originally was thinking of a lower number, but over the past few days, I've come to believe that 80 should be adequate after talking to a friend in a smaller town who actually, they have open town meetings, so it's a little bit different, but they had a quorum of, a quorum, they needed a quorum of 120 people and they did it outside and they were able to get it. So, they do have the advantage of anybody can, any registered voter can show up to a town meeting, so they had a potentially bigger pool than us. But I think, given the history of how town meeting members have responded to town meetings, even in bad weather, I think that we can do it with 80. I'm a little bit concerned about going too low, similar to what Mr. Samia said because not knowing who will show up and I'm not necessarily sure that it's going to be age-related, but I'm more comfortable with a higher, a higher level limit because I think it gives us the potential for greater diversity within the precincts and I think that that would serve us all well. So, I'm more comfortable with 80, but I'm willing to hear what other members think about that.
Okay.
Madam Chairman.
Mr. Kane.
Madam Chairman, given the track record of our town meeting, regardless of the weather, time of year, a very high attendance record, we, the moderator, manager, town officials, assistant town manager for event planning, DiPaolo, are going to extensive efforts to provide people with a safe place to meet. So, I don't see any reason to adjust the quorum. I'm confident that people will turn out, if not for any other reason, as they show a commitment to their town, they ran for the position. I'm quite confident we will soar past that minimum that is currently with us, given the conversations I've had with various people today. I think the folks who have gone and worked this to ensure we have a safe place and to be credited, and I think people will come out and force to take full advantage of their rights on that day.
Thank you, Mr. Kane. So, I am risk adverse and with all of the planning that has gone into making town meeting happen, knowing that it's going to be a day-long commitment, wanting to make sure that we are able to get the business of the town accomplished, worrying perhaps that people might fatigue as the day goes on and not stay for the full time, I am inclined to reduce the quorum. I was thinking of the 50%, but hearing what my colleagues are saying about the one-third reduction to bring it to 80, I can be comfortable there. I have great faith, as Mr. Kane has said, that those that were elected to represent a town meeting are going to follow through on their commitment, especially now when it's so important to participate in the process. But again, I want to balance that and as much as I want to believe that people will attend and I would love to see us have a full tent that day, I also want to make sure that we are not having to reschedule and replan, given the amount of resources it's taken to get to this point, because I don't know, two weeks out from August 8th, what the virus will be doing. There's too many variables for me to feel comfortable. So, I would be, I'm landing on that one-third as well.
Madam Chair, if I might, I think we're going to get, I think we're going to have adequate people, but I agree with you. I think we need to hedge our bets a little bit, particularly if we don't know what kind of weather we're going to have and if, and if we assume it's going to be a warm day, even under a tent out of the sun, I think it's going to be uncomfortable for people. And I don't anticipate that we're going to have, well, maybe we'll have something better than the auditorium chairs that we have at Oak, but a folding chair sitting there for five hours is not the most comfortable thing. I think between, between potential heat, I think it being a little uncomfortable, I don't want to have the problem of some people leaving because they just can't handle the heat or, well, I guess not handle the heat or handle the heat for that amount of time and find that we, we have a quorum call and we can't, and then we don't have a quorum and we can't finish. We're having to pay all that money for a tent and the other items that we have to have, to have to adjourn that town meeting for lack of a quorum during the middle of the meeting and have to come back, I think is going to be quite disruptive and I think it might be more problematic getting people back the second time. So, I agree with Mr. Kane, people show up. The only time people didn't show up was in a blizzard and I think it was Mr. Mena, myself, Mr. Lebo, it might have been Mr. Kane, who had to show up at the high school so that we could postpone, we could postpone the town meeting, but other than that, people have made it. But I think under these circumstances, we really, we need to hedge a little bit. I kind of think of it more as like a base, a reserve on an auction. You think you're going to get more, but you have that reserve in there just for the safety that in the event that things don't go as you planned. So, I think 80 is a good compromise and I mean, I'm ready to vote.
Okay. Before we, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Lebo.
Just one, I mean, I can count to three and I don't think I'm going to change anyone's opinion. I don't think the quorum is going to determine how many people come to the meeting. I don't think the lower the quorum, the lower the attendance we're going to have is. In fact, in many communities, extremely low quorums bring out a lot of town meeting members because they don't want a few people doing business. But I agree with Mr. DiPaolo with this concept that he articulated about hedging our bets, you know, hoping for the best and preparing for the worst. So, to my way of thinking, preparing for the worst is to have the smallest possible quorum as possible. But I realize, I get a strong sense that a majority of the board has settled on 80. Actually, well, we don't know how many people, I mean, I was going to say, shouldn't it be 81, but I guess I'm thinking about a tie vote, but that doesn't matter. It's the number of people who are in the room. I mean, you could always, and a tie vote is a no vote, I guess. So, I'm sorry, that was a little bit of a stream of consciousness there, but I do support a small, the smallest quorum that the board is comfortable with.
Mr. Mena, would you like to make a few comments before we vote?
I would, thank you. I've gone back and forth on the, what the right number reduction should be myself over the past month or two since the statute was enacted, although I'd like to think that we'll have no problem at all in painting and maintaining a quorum, even if it were the full regular quorum of 121. I know from past experience over the years that in the waning hours of some annual town meetings that have gone on for more than one night, we have had, at least we have come close to an issue of losing our quorum once, just, just a couple of times, but I certainly wouldn't want to be anywhere close to that situation after going through all the trouble and all the expense of having this, hopefully, one-day meeting. And by the way, as an aside, I do think that we do, we have to plan for a rain date, whether we like it or not, and have that in the books so that we're sure that the availability of the tent, the sound system and all the other facilities that are contracted for, we'll be able to remain on the campus at the location. My suggestion would be for the following day, but I just want to put that out there so that Mr. Mizikar, Mr. Baldinger and anyone else can think about that. Getting back to the quorum number, though, I, I think, I'll tell you now that you would have my consent, as required by the statute, for either the one-third reduction or the one-half reduction. I, I personally would feel a little bit better going down to 50% if, if only to guard against some extreme situation as Mrs. Cassavant was anticipating or hoping against, which was that if something happened with the pandemic and the numbers started reversing or the weather happened to be extremely uncomfortable or unpleasant that day, there might be a number of people who would be discouraged from attending in the first place or staying there. But I think if we, if the sense of the board is that reducing it from 121 to 80 would be more than enough of a reduction, then I wouldn't object to that. I'd still prefer a reduction to 50%, which would be 61.
Thank you, Mr. Mena. Any further comments from the board? Well, then, I will entertain a motion then.
Madam Chairman.
Mr. Lebo.
The only way to find out how it's going to go is to make a motion and take a vote. I move that, given the rescheduled annual town meeting, I move that, given that the rescheduled annual town meeting will occur during the state of emergency declared by Governor Charles Baker on March 10th, 2020, in accordance with Chapter 92 of the Acts of 2020, and in order to ensure the mandatory business of the town be completed at the rescheduled meeting, that the board vote to reduce the number of voters necessary to constitute a quorum to 61 voters, which is 50% of the normal quorum. Second.
Okay. The motion has been made and seconded. I will take a roll call vote. Mr. Lebo.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
No.
Mr. DiPaolo.
I'm sorry. I didn't know I was muted. I was trying to get your attention.
Sorry.
We have the second for purposes of discussion. If the moderator feels more comfortable with 61, I can live with that. I have, I think I'm a little more willing to take the risk at 80, but I, you know, I can live with 61 out of, I really have a deference to the moderator. I mean, he's been following his town meetings throughout the state much more closely than us, so I think 80 is, I think 80 is fine, but at a deference to the moderator, if he feels more comfortable with 61, I can go along with that. So, having said that, I will say aye on that.
Okay. Mr. Kane.
No.
Mrs. Cassavant, aye. For the reasons that Mr. DiPaolo just stated with what the moderator has just explained and also my previous comment to being risk adverse in this situation. So, the motion to reduce the quorum to 61 voters passes 3-2. So, Mr. Mena, I thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you all very much and I look forward to working with all of you and the other members of the ad hoc planning committee in getting ready for town meeting on August 8th. Look forward to seeing everyone there.
Okay, thanks very much. Have a good night.
Thank you, Chris.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Kane.
When do we discuss the concept of what I will describe as bundling?
Mr. Mizikar. When will we discuss the bundling of articles? Mr. Kane would like to know.
We can certainly do that in any of your upcoming meetings and get the board's opinion on that. So.
Okay, thank you.
Let me, sorry, I can be specific. The board will vote to consider whether or not you support articles on the meeting on the 28th or we could also consider it as a separate agenda item on the 21st. So, I can circle back.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay. Item number 10 is a 7:30 PM continued public hearing with Keith Lindem from Pose Manager of 81 Clinton Pub LLC, doing business as Billy's Pub, 81 Clinton Street, for an all-alcohol beverages pouring license and entertainment license. Clinton Street, for an all alcohol beverages pouring license and entertainment license, hours of operation Sunday through Saturday, eleven A.M. to two A.M., hours of entertainment Friday and Saturday, seven P.M. to eleven P.M. Is Mr. Lindem or someone representing him present this evening?
I am present.
Could you identify yourself, please?
Sure. My name is Keith Lindem.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, Mr. Lindem, we, before we get started on your continued hearing, I would just like to know if you could provide the board with an update on three outstanding items that are critical to the permit process or your license process, rather. The payment of your taxes, the balance on the water and sewer bill, and the status of the outstanding issues with the building permit and inspections.
I also have Mr. Joe Duggan on the line, and he has been handling those issues on the property.
Okay.
And he can explain those in a little further detail.
Okay, Mr. Duggan.
Yes. How are you?
Fine, well, thank you.
How's everybody doing tonight? Isn't this wonderful with this, damn it? Oh, my God. As you know, we were supposed to pay the taxes, but Billy's hasn't been able to provide any rental income to me, okay, because we're closed, all right? And one of the problems that we have is that we shouldn't have been closed because when we went to get the certificate of occupancy back in January, your building inspector was so inclined to say that we had a zoning violation.
Excuse me, Mr. Duggan. Let's not make any attacks on personal character of the building, Inspector, please.
I respect that. All right. We got issues that we need to deal with, okay? And I am preparing to deal with everything, and I do have to reach out to the tax department, and I do have to reach out, I have to reach out to actually the insurance companies and everything like that, because, as you know, I have to, they have to have a liquor liability. So I am going to be lending Keith Lindem and Billy's some money to get all this corrected, okay? And I am doing that now, and with the fact that I'm lending the money, I'm sure within the next week to ten days, everything will be one thousand percent in place for you guys to be able to do a vote and know where at.
Okay, so we recognize that you're requesting a continuance of this hearing. However...
Because it's related to money, and I now...
Yes, I understand that. However, this has been since February, and you had an agreement in place with the town treasurer to begin payment of the back taxes. If I understand correctly, payment has not been begun on that yet?
No, it has not. We have not been open. We haven't been able to produce any income.
And there's still a balance on the water and sewer bill?
Ah, yes, there is.
And the status of the outstanding issues with your building permit are still in existence?
No, we are one hundred percent ready to go for that. The money that I have provided to Keith was able to get everything in compliance, so we can go ahead with the building inspector, call for an inspection, and get that inspection right in place.
Because I believe that I have documentation here that you don't have a certificate of occupancy yet.
No, ma'am. We do not have a certificate of occupancy because you have to get the building inspector to go through, and there were issues, and one of the issues was the gas was turned off.
I understand.
And that was a misunderstanding. Yeah, so, you know, it wasn't turned off because there was any issues or danger to anybody. It was simply turned off because of non-payment.
Okay, so while I understand that COVID has exacerbated your situation, I feel...
Oh, my God, you don't even know.
I would like to...
As well as every one of you guys, too.
Again, Mr. Duggan, I feel like the staff in the town manager's office and this board has been very supportive and accommodating of your request to continue this hearing since February.
Yes, you have. You have been wonderful. You have been wonderful.
However, at this point, I'm starting to be concerned that perhaps neighbors or others in the community that might be following this are unaware that we're still discussing this topic. I'd like to allow the board members an opportunity to weigh in with their thoughts on this. However, I am not inclined to continue the hearing again this evening.
Well...
Hold on just a second, Mr. Duggan. Mr. Duggan, I'd like to have my, the board members have an opportunity...
Well, listen, if you want us to go to an attorney, sue your building inspector, just tell me.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Mr. DiPaolo.
Ask Mr. Duggan to control himself, or I think right at this point, I'd be willing to close the hearing and make a vote. I know he's frustrated, we're frustrated, and, but there's no reason to think that he can blow up and start going ballistic. So if that's going to be the case, and I'll give him the opportunity to calm himself down and make a comment if you allow it, but if he gets out of order, I'm going to call for a point of order, and then I will ask that the board move to a vote on either a continuance or noting the license.
Thank you, Mr. DiPaolo. Mr. Duggan, if you have a comment that you can make respectfully within a minute or two, that's fine, but I would like the board to have an opportunity to discuss the continuance.
Madam Chair, for the record, I muted Mr. Duggan, so he's going to have to press star six to unmute himself.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar.
Okay, I apologize. I'm just going to let Keith finish off and let him finish all this because I have a lot of hostility, and there's no way, I don't feel we deserve what we've been treated.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Duggan. We'll let Mr. Lindem take that.
Thank you, and I'm sorry. I didn't mean to get upset, I'm sorry.
I understand, thank you.
There's two sides to every story.
I understand. Thank you, Mr. Duggan.
Thank, you're welcome. Okay, Keith, can you finish this up, please?
Certainly, yes.
Board members, are there any comments going from our board regarding continuing this hearing at this time?
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Kane.
Months ago, several of us expressed concern as to the lack of progress. We gave the proponents the benefit of the doubt. Even if they're this close, I think we should not extend. We should re-advertise and start fresh once they have their act together for the reason that you mentioned. If someone is following this and has a life, they have moved on. They don't know when the hearings are coming and so forth, and I think it's only fair that at this point in this effort, they get a fresh notice so that if, in fact, these gentlemen have everything together and we have a future hearing, people are advised in a timely fashion and can come forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board members wishing to comment? I am also, I share Mr. Kane's thoughts there that I really do think that at this point in time, this has gone on for long enough. I find it difficult to follow, and I am a member of the board, and reading all of the information that comes before me, I think as a member of the public, it would be even more difficult and almost impossible to keep up with the different changes that have been taking place since February. I would favor not continuing this hearing this evening, but rather closing the hearing and then inviting you to come back and reapply for your license when you have everything resolved and documentation in hand.
Okay, and what would the timeframe? Hypothetically, if everything got resolved within the next couple of weeks and we reapply, one would, or we could go back in front of the committee?
Well, once you had your documentation in hand, Mr. Duggan, you would be able to go through the application process, and it would be placed on a future agenda. And we meet typically the second and fourth Tuesday of every month.
Okay.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Mr. DiPaolo.
Mr. Lindem, just so you know, we have a ten-day advertising requirement for an ad, so earlier you would get in an application if that's the way we voted this evening. Soon as you could get on, you could get on the agenda. So, I mean, I'd be willing to entertain hearing your application again personally when you had everything together at the next available hearing from that point. But, so, I mean, I would encourage you to get on as quickly as you can.
Thank you.
Okay. There's no further, yeah, Mr. LeBeau.
Procedural question. What exactly, I mean, what exactly is the action that we need to take? Do we need to actually deny present application?
Yes. Mr. Mizikar, would you like to answer that? But I, or I can...
That's what I thought, but I just...
Yes, we're going to need to deny the application. We can refund the license fee, and then we'll just start again, start fresh. We would close the hearing also. Mr. DiPaolo?
I...
Are you trying to say something?
Well, I think if that's going to be the case, one, one of the reasons is because of the lack of a certificate of occupancy, which is required by, I believe, the A B C C, but it must be the A B C C to actually have a liquor license, and also because of the requirement by law that taxes and fees current are under an agreement plan in order to be considered eligible to apply for a license. So it would have, if we want, or both of those items, as the reason to deny if we were going to do it, if that was going to be the vote.
Thank you, Mr. DiPaolo.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Mizikar.
I just want to point out that the refunding would be for the license fee for the calendar year of two thousand and twenty, which the town has held in anticipation of approval of this, so that the application fee is non-refundable and would be required again.
Thank you. Mr. Lindem, did you have anything else?
I do not, thank you.
The board members, I will entertain a motion to decide how we want to handle this.
Madam Chairman, I think the first step would be, I would make a motion that we close this hearing.
Second.
Second.
Motion to close the hearing has been made and seconded, so we'll take a roll call vote. Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo.
Aye.
Mr. Kane.
Aye.
And Mrs. Cassavant, aye. What is the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chairman.
Mr. LeBeau.
Madam Chairman, I move the board to deny the license application for Billy's Pub.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, then I will take a roll call vote. Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo.
Aye.
Mr. Kane.
Aye.
Mrs. Cassavant, aye. So, Mr. Duggan and Mr. Lindem, we do invite you to reapply as soon as you have your documentation in order. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Yep, take care. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a seven forty-five public hearing with Melinda Springer of Forty-Seven Memorial Drive to consider violations of nuisance dog orders relative to Tag Number Two One Nine Six and Tag Number Two One Nine Seven pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter One Forty, Section One Fifty-Seven. I just have to read through, so please bear with me. The Board of Selectmen has scheduled this dog hearing to take testimony and consider evidence to determine whether owner Miss Melinda Springer residing at Forty-Seven Memorial Drive has violated the nuisance dog order from March twelfth, two thousand and nineteen, in which Bruno, Tag Two One Nine Six, and Poppy, Tag Two One Nine Seven, were found to be nuisance dogs pursuant to General Law's Chapter One Forty, Section One Fifty-Seven. The law requires that the Board of Selectmen investigate complaints of this nature and also requires us to conduct an examination of the oath of the complainant. As such, I will ask that all those who will testify be sworn in before testifying. This includes those on all sides of this issue. I ask that all wish to be heard on this matter state your name and address when I open the matter up for discussion. I will ask that you raise your right hand and say, "I do." This is the order in which we will proceed. I will ask that the complainants testify first. That will be Miss Jane and Mr. Edward Hedberg of Thirty-Four Patriot Lane. I will then ask to hear comments of the other witnesses that wish to speak. I will then hear from our Animal Control Officer, Keith Elms. I will then hear from dog owner Miss Melinda Springer and/or your attorney, if you wish. I will then allow Miss Melinda Springer or her attorney the opportunity to question the witnesses. In all cases, any question should be directed through me. I ask that you be courteous. Once the questioning is concluded, I will then ask Miss Springer if she has any witnesses, and if so, we will hear the testimony. At the conclusion of that testimony, I will ask the board for a motion to close the hearing, and then the board will go into a deliberation phase to make a finding. This will be done in open session, and a motion will be made by a member of the Board of Selectmen as to our findings. Those findings can be any of the following. There is no finding since the dogs were already deemed a nuisance. The board may, if it deems necessary, alter the existing order by modifying the existing requirements. The board may, if it deems necessary, add additional requirements to the order in order to reduce the barking. The board may, if it deems necessary, determine there is nothing further for the board to order. I will start with the testimony of Mr. and Mrs. Hedberg. The owner may bring petition in this, may bring a petition in the district court within ten days of this hearing, have it reviewed by the court or a magistrate of the court. Mr. Hedberg, if you are present...
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi. Hi, this is Jeremy Cohen, attorney with Austin Doglars. I'm representing the complainants, the Hedbergs.
Okay, so...
A few opening comments before we get to the Hedberg's testimony.
Oh, do I need to swear? You, and I think I need to swear you in first.
Providing testimony, just some comments and a roadmap for what you'll hear. But I'm, yeah, I'm not a witness. You're here tonight because for the last four hundred and ninety days, the nuisance order that was put in place hasn't been adhered to. I've watched the hearing from March nineteenth, and tonight is not about, it's not about the dogs at all. It's about the owners and the power that the board has to enforce the order that it put in over a year ago. The board has a duty to the residents who live with my clients and are neighbors to them to take immediate action to fix the problem here. I've read the letters, and so have you. It's a miserable existence for these people because the dog owners refuse to take accountability. It's simple to see that they don't take accountability because their defenses at the last hearing that were high-paying taxpayers is not a defense to whether or not they're harboring nuisance dogs. Today, I received comments from Miss Springer in defense of her position saying that my clients are harassing her. She refers to them as being old, and she suggests that if they didn't want to have this happen, they should have purchased the property themselves. They posted on Facebook that their dogs are wearing these bark collars because they have evil neighbors, which isn't true. It's because the board imposed that. And then they also post something that says you shouldn't live next to a farm if you don't want to have to deal with the livestock and the issues that come with it. There's also a provision where they're trying to be defended by the USDA right to farm. That's a dangerous area because the Massachusetts Department of Agriculture particularly cars out nuisance violation for dogs in this instance. The board is well aware that the nuisance barking has continued for the last eight, sixteen months. I've spent in the packet of about twenty-seven pages. You have, I tried to limit it to mostly the complaints just in two thousand and twenty. I've also provided you with the relevant laws that are in your hand about what you can do to enforce the very order. you can do to enforce the very order that you voted on. The consequences for what these neighbors are doing by not adhering to the order should be severe. If you read the law that I provided you with under 140, 157, they can be jailed, they can be fined, and their dogs can be seized. At any time, an animal control officer or a member of law enforcement can go to the property and insist that the dogs be restrained or impounded. This is within your rights to do it. This shouldn't have been going on for the last year, but we're here tonight to fix it. First, we'll hear from, from the Hedbergs. I believe it's, it'll be Jane Hedberg. Uh, we're shooting, we're not going to walk through the last 490 days, but she'll just walk you through a few of the, the issues that have come up over the last, um, since the last hearing. And we certainly appreciate the investigation that's been done by this Board. Unlike a lot of Boards, I know that many members of you have gone out there and done your own investigation, and that is greatly appreciated.
Madam Chairman?
Mr. DePaolo?
Um, I, I think, uh, typically we've sworn in all the people who are going to testify, um, at one of these hearings, um, before we actually decide.
That's correct.
And I, I think it would be a good idea if, if you took the pause and did it now because, um, remote, uh, remote meetings might make it difficult to keep track of who are, was or was not sworn in.
No, that was, that was my thought as well. Thank you, Mr. DePaolo. Um, so, Mr. Hedberg and Mrs. Hedberg?
Present.
I could, okay, Mr. Hedberg, I'm going to start with you. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, please state, "I do."
I do.
Okay. Ms. Hedberg?
Yes?
Please raise your right hand. Okay, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, please state, "I do."
I do.
Okay, and you may proceed with your testimony.
Thank you. Uh, Jane, could you just identify yourself?
Uh, this is Jane Hedberg from 34 Patriot Lane.
How long have you lived there?
Uh, we, we moved here in June of 2013, so just over seven years.
Okay, and, uh, since the last hearing, have you kept track of, um, the barking by the Springer's dogs?
Um, I kept track of it, um, randomly, and then in September of 2019, specifically on the 26th, um, my husband and I and several of our neighbors had requested a meeting, um, at which time we had a meeting with Mr. DePaolo, Mr. Mizikar, and several of the other residents of Patriot Lane. And they had asked us at that meeting if we could keep a more detailed report of the barking. So, beginning that day, the following day, which was, um, September 27th, I have been keeping a running report of that barking log from a day-to-day basis every day from September 27th through today.
Okay, and.
I now have, I now have 20 pages.
Okay, and you supplied, uh, which I share with the Board, the months of April, May, and June of 2020, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, the Board, that's pages 21, 22, and 23 of our packet. Uh, and where do you keep this log?
Um, I keep a, uh, large pad of, uh, nine-and-a-half-by-eleven lines paper with a pen on top of it on my kitchen counter, and it never moves from there.
Okay, and just looking at the three months that you supplied, uh, there's, it appears as notations on every day. Without explaining every day, how often do you have to, do you write in this log and why do you write in it?
Um, there are days that sometimes I will make five, six, or seven different entries. Um, there are a couple of days where maybe I may make one or two entries. Um, specifically, I do it, I, I do it from the time that we first hear the barking in the morning, so that's the very first entry on every single day regardless of what time they come out until the last barking at night and whatever occurs during the day.
What qualifies as an entry? I mean, if the doctor just, what, you can't log every single time they bark because certainly the dogs are, are allowed to bark, I believe. What qualifies as an entry?
Um, I, I would say if the barking continues it for more than a half an hour at a time, I will log that down. Sometimes it will continue, and I will just keep noting, an hour later, the barking is still going on, an hour and a half later, the barking is still going on.
Okay, so you are under oath, and, uh, under oath, will you confirm that the submissions that we did for April, May, and June are accurate records of the barking with entries of essentially 30 minutes or more required to be an entry?
Absolutely.
Okay, why don't you tell us about a few of them, just a few, and, and how they've impacted you since the nuisance order was put in place?
Um, so I didn't want to go back to, back to 2019 from after the hearing because, like I said, I started keeping the detailed logs after the meeting in September of 2019.
Okay, so tell us right now, just bring us to a few of them right now.
All right, so, um, the beginning of the year in January, January of this year was a particularly bad month. Um, and I made note particularly on Thursday, January 30th, um, the dogs actually didn't go out that morning until 9:30. But I had noted that there was non-stop, and when I mean non-stop, I mean these dogs bark without taking a breath, that that continued until 10:15 that morning. At 10:15, I called Animal Control and left a message. I did not hear back from him. They were still barking at 11:20 that day. They were still barking at 11:45. At 11:50, I called Animal Control back and left another message. They were still barking at 1:10 in the afternoon. I left, I had to do some errands. I came home at 3:15, they were still barking. Animal Control actually did call me back before they left that day at about 4:15. I had discussed this with him, and he happened to mention to me that for the, because that happened to be the last day of the month in January, that he had received over 50 calls for January of 2020.
Okay, and when this barking occurs, what is that in your home? How does it impact you?
Um, it, it, it affects our, our total quality of life. Um, I, I have been working from home for a couple of years, and as I had mentioned back in the hearing back in March of 2019, there were times when it was so bad within my house, in my office, which is in the back of my house, furthest away from the, the property where the dogs are on, that I actually had to pack up my things in my car and go to my off-site business office. I can't do that, I can't do that right now, and haven't been able to do that since March.
Uh, does it impact things that you do for pleasure on the house? Can you watch TV? Can you sit outside? What, can you get some?
Um, we, we, we cannot, we can no longer go and sit outside. We try to go sometimes and sit on the front porch because now my husband's working from home also. We don't want to eat on our back desk outside because we're afraid that if we go out there, if the dogs aren't barking when we go out there, that they will start barking when we're, when we're in the middle of eating.
Okay.
When, when we're in the house with the television on in our family room, we can still hear the dogs barking.
Okay, uh, now, tell us, I want to bring you to, uh, July 3rd of this year.
Okay.
Uh, over the holiday, the 3rd, 4th, tell me about that day. Tell everyone about that day.
So, we're pretty, we're pretty sure that the Springer's are, have not been, um, present on their property for the last couple of weeks. So, that Friday.
Tell us about the dogs.
So, that Friday, July 3rd, the dogs went out at 8:25 in the morning, and they barked nonstop until 9:55. They were still barking continuously at 12 noon. Um, I did call Animal Control at 1:35, assuming that he might be there, but I wasn't sure because a lot, that was a holiday for a lot of people. I left a message, and at 3 o'clock, the dogs were still barking. At 3:15, I had to call the Shrewsbury Police Department and ask them to send somebody up there. The dogs were still barking at 5 o'clock that evening, and I told my husband that I could not stay home any longer. If he wanted to stay home, he could, but I could no longer take it in the house. I packed up some things in my car. At 5 o'clock on Friday, July 3rd, I said, "I'm going to go buy a newspaper, and I'm going to go sit in the parking lot somewhere, read the newspaper, and please send me a text." This is what I told my husband, "Please send me a text when you are absolutely sure that the dogs have been put in for the evening." At 6:15, my, when I wasn't home, my husband called the police department because they were still barking, and at 8:15, my husband sent me a text. I was in the parking lot at a Westboro Shopping Center and said, "I am pretty sure that the dogs have stopped barking, you can come home."
Uh, in 2020, how many times do you think you've called Animal Control or the Police Department about the barking dogs?
Uh, in the last six months?
I don't know, a lot.
I don't know. 60, 70 times at least.
Do you call them every time that, uh, the dogs are barking?
No, 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 not at all.
Oh, so, if, if the measures that were put in place last year, the, the bark collar in particular, uh, well, based on what you're, you're witnessing and hearing and seeing, has the bark collar been effective?
Not at all.
Have you, um, now, where you live, it's in Del Community, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Uh, what do you, how, how do you respond to the defense that you've been deceptive in your timeline and that you don't have credibility when it comes to this, and you're just harassing the farm owners? How do you respond to that?
Um, well, if, if I'm, if I'm being uncredible and, um, embellishing anything, then there are numerous other people in this neighborhood that are also doing the same thing.
Okay, um, is there anything else you wanted the Board to know about your existence with these dogs?
Um, the only, the only other comment that I had to make was that, at the last hearing, public hearing, I know that the Springer, um, Melinda Springer had noted that the dogs were put into the barn every evening at 6:00 PM, and since my barking, my detailed barking log in September of 2019, there has, there has never, my last entry on my barking log every day is the last time that I hear them bark, and there has never been a day that those dogs have been in the barn at 6 o'clock, never.
Okay, well, the, the order that was issued, um, requires them to be in the barn from 9:00 PM to 7:00 AM, so.
That's correct.
Uh, does any of your logging show that that has not been the case?
Um, that has, I, I have heard them only a few times after 9 o'clock because I understand that that's the time that they have to be in according to the orders, but I was just, the only reason that I wanted to point that out was because the Board had been told that the dogs were in the barn every night at 6:00, and I had to clarify that to say the dogs are never in the barn at 6:00 at night.
Okay. At the last hearing, uh, you testified that your biggest fear was, leading up to that hearing, how many months this had gone on with how many calls you had to make, how many letters you had to write, but that you hadn't seen any change to the behavior. Is that fear still in existence?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, and Mr. Hedberg, anything you want to add?
Um, just whatever help the Board could give us to keep the dogs quiet would be much appreciated.
Uh, okay, and I think we have, uh, one other, two other witnesses that want to testify. I, based on your, your procedural.
I would need to swear them in, Mr. Cohen.
Thank you. Uh, it's, um, Deb and Rob Luke.
Okay, Mr. and Mrs. Luke, if you're present, I'll start with.
Yes, we are, yeah.
Okay, very good. I'll start with, um, Mr. Luke, please. If you could raise your right hand.
Raise.
Do you, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, please state, "I do."
I do.
And Mrs. Luke, you could raise your right hand, please.
Yes.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, please state, "I do."
I do.
Very good, please proceed.
Thank you. Um, Deb, Luke, uh, can you just identify yourself and where you live?
Yes, Deborah Luke, 28 Patriot Lane in Shrewsbury.
And how long have you lived there?
August 23rd, 2011. My husband and I purchased and moved into our home.
Okay, and, um, do you have a dog?
Oh, no, no.
Okay, so, um, you were present at the hearing in March of 2019?
I was not. I was home recovering from shoulder surgery, but my husband was.
Okay, and, um, since the hearing in March of 19, have you been able to see a difference in the, the nuisance barking by the Springer dogs?
Not at all.
So, what is a typical day like for you?
A typical day, they start sometime early in the morning. We do not keep a log like Jane does because she has been diligent in this, and I must give her credit for that, but we, we simply just don't do it. We call when they bark a lot, we don't call every day, but if they are particularly bothersome, we call, and when they're particularly bothersome, we write letters to the Board of Selectmen, and we have notes on the days that have been particularly bad. I can give you an example.
Please do.
Um, okay, the, the Board had indicated that the dogs were supposed to be in the barn from 9:00 PM until 7:00 AM. On May 17th, they started barking at 5:00 AM, and they continued barking for most of the day. I know that we're not the only neighbors who notice this because other neighbors commented to us about that. And, yeah, I'm sorry, yes?
Go ahead, go ahead.
No, go ahead, ask the question.
I, I just want to understand, so, I mean, some people might not be bothered by the barking. Can, is this barking for a couple of minutes? Or how long does it go on? But more importantly, how does it impact your life at, at the house?
Well, it impacts us in that we can't keep our front door open because the barking is so loud, and it disturbs our peace. I have numerous hobbies. We're both retired, so does my husband. It affects the quality of the work that we do on, on our different hobbies. It also affects our peace of mind, and it also affects my husband's blood, blood pressure. He's under doctor's treatment for high blood pressure, and the barking really exacerbates it because it goes on for hours sometimes. We had, um, one day, June 8th, where they barked all day. I, you know, can check my phone logs, and I can tell you, um, July 3rd particularly, I have to go with this one because I know Jane already spoke about it, I called police dispatch at 9:59 in the morning, they had been barking since 8:30, as far as I know. They had been barking since eight-thirty, as far as I know. I called Police Dispatch again at eleven twenty-one. They said they would do something about it. I called Police Dispatch again at three twenty-one. Nothing had been done, as far as I know. And the response I got from the Police Dispatcher was, "What do you want us to do?" I said, "I want you to do something about it, and please go up there or something, have the dogs stop." At six fourteen, they still had not stopped, and I called Police Dispatch for the fourth time. I did not call the Animal Control Officer because it was July third, and it was my understanding, right or wrong, that it was the holiday. So, I didn't think the Animal Control Officer would be around. That was followed by July fourth, in which they barked all day again. We don't call every day. We get really tired of this. It is so tiresome. We also cannot sit on our back porch to have dinner or to enjoy the quiet and the green trees all around us because the dogs bark so loudly sometimes. Now, our front of the house faces the Springer's property. You have to walk through the whole house to go on our back deck. We can be sitting on our back deck at times, and they're so loud, it just disturbs us. We can't stay out there. But then we come in the house, and even with the air conditioning on and the house closed up and the TV on, we can still hear them.
I saw a letter that, from you and your husband, that said you'd have the TV on, the washing machine on, the dryer on.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, and we can still hear them, yeah. Yep.
Well, speaking about, when you've been asked, "Well, what do you want to have done?" I know that, um, you and I have discussed some remedies here. It... Has, has what's been in place, has the bark collar to your, um, to, to, in your experience, has the bark collar been effective?
No, not at all. To me, an effective bark collar means the dogs don't bark. Not that the bog, the dogs have it on, and they continue to bark.
And...
I think that, I, I think that when the board put the original order in place, that they were to wear bark collars, there was a little bit of a flaw in that in that they should have said that they had bark collars that worked and stopped them from barking. Not that it's like, "We're bark collars" because I think the Springer's defense has been, and the board has also gone along with this, that they are in compliance, they're wearing bark collars. But if the bark collars don't work, what good are they?
One of the issue, one of the, uh, components of the order was that, uh, Poppy and Bruno were to be placed in the barn anytime there's workers on the property. Has that been the case?
Uh, that I wouldn't be able to speak to.
Okay.
I really don't know.
And how about that they're to be kept in the barn from nine PM to seven AM? I think you spoke to that a little bit already, but was that just a one or two-time thing, or, uh...
The early morning has been, uh, you know, an odd occurrence. But we were just so surprised by that. And my husband is an early riser, and he gets up and he paints, he does paintings, and he hears the dogs barking. It's very disturbing at five o'clock in the morning. You don't expect that.
What else do you want to share with the board?
Well, we'd like to say that, you know, we moved here, and there were people who owned, I don't know, horses or something up there. We don't even know who the neighbors were. There were never any issues. The dogs moved in, and it has been one day after another of barking, and it's, it's really gotten old. I think my husband would like to say something also.
Okay, before he does, uh, now, it, I, the, part of the submissions from the defense here are that while you've been living there, uh, you, uh, you actually are named in particular with Jane, not only you fabricating this, but that, um, there's a hundred pages of police reports about you complaining about the previous owners at the farm. Is that true?
Um, no, as a matter of fact, that's laughable because it's my understanding from talking to Charlie Casperson, who's a neighbor up the street and has lived here as long as Adam's farm has been in, in existence. He's one of the first residents. There were some issues with a dog that the previous owner had that was running wild through the streets. That was before we moved here. I had nothing to do with that. And I think if you look at the names on the complainants, if they're recorded, my name will never show up there. I've never, I never called anyone about anything before we started calling about these dogs.
Has there been any time since the Springer's have moved in that they have apologized or accepted accountability for any of the disturbances that you've described?
Oh, no, never.
Are you aware that, um, Ms. Springer has said that if you wanted to make sure that this, this noise wouldn't happen or that the place would never be occupied, that you should have purchased the property when it was for sale?
No, I was not aware of that.
All right.
And that's a little silly, if you ask me, but so be it.
Tell me about the no trespassing signs or keep-out signs.
Oh, I, it's my, it's my understanding that, you know, the fence went up, and then there were a few signs there. And, um, it's my understanding that there are eighty-four or eighty-five signs that are posted along the perimeter of their property.
Okay.
It's highly offensive. I don't know if they're expecting, you know, an onslaught of senior citizens to come barricading, you know, marauding senior citizens on their property or what they're expecting. All we want is peace and quiet, which is what we had before they moved in. No barking dogs, please. I don't care what they do on their property. That's their business. But please make the dogs be quiet.
But you understand the dogs, eh, they can bark. There are times where the dogs should be able to bark.
Yeah, we understand that. We have no problem with that. If the dogs bark once or twice during the day, that's fine. It's the continuous barking that goes on for hours that is really bothersome.
Okay, uh, how about the board? We'll hear from, from Mr. Luke then.
Yeah, I think my wife covered most everything that, uh, you need. I'm just asking the board that, you know, this has gone on for over eighteen months. It's made our life here miserable, and we'd love to live here before the, the dogs showed up. And we're ac- asking, please, would the board take some action tonight and, uh, get this done? No more monitoring the situation. Uh, really do something to help us. Thank you.
Thank you. As far as I know, Madam Chair, I, I don't know of anybody else who is wanting to testify, but they may have shown up today.
Okay, well, is there anyone else?
This is David Roy.
And are you a neighbor, sir?
Yes, I'm at 26 Patriot Lane.
Okay, and you would wish to testify?
Yes.
Okay, then I will need to swear you in. If you could please raise your right hand.
Raise.
Um, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, please state, "I do." And I have to say, I, I apologize, but I didn't catch your name.
It's David Roy, R-O-Y.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Roy.
So, I've, I've lived here since, um, November of two thousand and eleven. And I, I was the one at the March meeting that had the extensive record of, um, the barking. I keep thinking that, what's the difference between a disturbance and a nuisance? You know, a disturbance is if a dog is threatened or something, and it barks periodically. That's just a disturbance. But when they, when they keep barking forever, that's a nuisance. And that's what we're living with here. I know that, for instance, yesterday, I stepped outside at three fifteen, and the dogs were barking for over an hour when I came back in. They started barking at eight sixteen this morning, and I li- I listened for forty-five minutes and then just stopped listening. I don't think that, I don't even think that they have dog collars on. And if they do have dog collars, they're, they're not effective. You know, I would like an effective dog collar on those dogs. Or they should be trained to only bark when they're threatened, not, not when a butterfly comes through or a rooster crows or a duck waddles because that's what it seems to be going on there. Now, I just want to support my other neighbor's observations that I suffer the same observations. Okay, that's what I wish to say.
Okay, is there anyone else wishing to speak at this time, um, in support of what the Hedbergs were, were saying? Neighbors from the Patriot Lane area? Okay. Remember, if you're on a, a cell phone, you're going to need to use star six to unmute yourself. All right, then, we're going to move on. Um, is Animal Control Officer Elms present?
I, uh, this is Attorney Kathy Waller, um, representing, uh, Melinda Springer. Is, is it, uh, the board's intention to hear all the witnesses first and then have questioning from Melinda Springer's side? Or are we proceeding with first the complainants and go that way? I'm just trying to get a procedure.
No, that's fine. Um, it was my intention to, uh, have the witnesses for the complainants, then move on to the Animal Control Officer, then move to the Springer's and, and you as their attorney, and then those witnesses, and then we would close the hearing.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to get the procedure out. Thank you.
That's fine, no problem at all. Okay, let's go back to, um, Animal Control Officer Keith Elms. Okay. A little bit, but it's faint. Is it just...
Any better?
That is better, much better, thank you. Okay, so, um, I will swear you in next. Um, please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, please state, "I do."
I do.
Okay. And you're all set to provide your testimony.
All right, so as we know, as we've heard from the Hedbergs and Luke's and their attorney, and the other resident on Patriot Lane, this has been an ongoing issue for quite some time. Um, you know, in my observation, they, they've called pretty frequently with complaints, uh, you know, regarding the dogs barking. When I have responded up there, which has been, you know, numerous times, uh, I will hear the dogs barking occasionally. Often, I get up there, could be, it could be a, could be a result of sometimes I'm not always able to get there within, you know, a half an hour or so. But generally, when I go up, I, I hear it pretty quiet, which to me kind of says that the barking is, while it's frequent, it is, it seems to be intermittent. Um, back in March of two thousand and nineteen, the board did declare the dogs a nuisance. They did order the dogs to wear bark collars and by nine PM, receive training, and be put in the barn once, uh, if outside contractors came onto the property. As far as where to go from here, I mean, with everything that's gone on over the past year, we, we pretty much know the bark collars are not effective. I have suggested to the Springer's in the past to try a different sort of motive action or, um, a different delivery system to get the dogs to, to reduce the barking. So far, they've never really been accepting of, of trying something else. The collars that are in place now were approved by the former Animal Control Officer, and they want to stick with those. Um, I also do notice when the Springer's do go on vacation, there seems to be a large, a large spike in complaints from the residents on Patriot Lane. Um, those weeks, it's been a lot more calls. They normally leave the dogs in care of the tenants that live on their property and not sure what the cause is. I believe the dogs may be left to their own devices for much of the day. I'm not sure if those tenants go off to work, but we tend to get a lot more complaints during those weeks. I mean, as far as I can see from here, I mean, there needs to be something put in place where we have a spark that could system to control the barking. The dogs generally are in compliance almost always with being inside by nine PM, not out before seven. Um, so these complaints are coming during day, during business, business-type hours. But I do think we need, we do need to order a different type of collar, at least explore that option to get control of the, of the barking because what's in place now just hasn't been effective. If that's what I have, I mean, I'm happy to answer any questions from the board.
Okay. Um, before we entertain questions from the board, I'd just like to continue on, um, with the testimony. And then, when the testimony is complete, we'll circle back for board, board member questions. Thank you, Mr. Elms.
You're welcome.
Okay, that brings us to the Springer's and their attorneys. I apologize, in a virtual setting like this, it's a little bit difficult to know exactly who's on. Um, so again, I know the attorney is present. And then, is it both, um, both Mr. and Mrs. Springer or just Ms. Springer? Ms. Springer, are you on the call? Hi.
Me and my husband are both here, thank you.
Okay, because I would need to swear you both, and then one at a time?
Sure.
Okay, so, okay. So, Ms. Springer, if you could raise your right hand. And, um, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, please state, "I do."
I do.
And Mr. Springer, if you could raise your right hand?
Raise.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, please state, "I do."
I do.
All right, then, we can proceed. So, if your attorney is going to be speaking, it's star six to unmute.
I'm just reiterating what I already said, and nobody heard, was that, uh, any openings are certainly just an opening, and I understand my brother of a lot of extraneous things, which I think we should just focus on what's going forward. Uh, so with that, I just, um, Melinda Springer, you'll go first. Please tell the individuals where you're, where you live and the address of your property, just for the record. Melinda?
We live at forty-seven Memorial Drive in Shrewsbury, Massachusetts.
Okay, and can you tell the board what type of dogs you, uh, have named Poppy? What are they, Breeze?
So, we have two livestock guardian dogs, mainly Great Pioneers, Poppy and Bruno.
Okay, and sometime last March of two thousand and nineteen, uh, you recall, it disturbed the board with respect to the two dogs, do you not?
Yeah, I was there.
Okay, and as a result of that, uh, just a second, you spoke to the then, um, commissioned Animal Control Officer. Do you recall that?
Yeah.
And when you had conversa- and what was that individual's name? I, I can't hear you.
Oh, it was Leanne, um, Mrs. Tevye.
Okay, and did you receive some information from her about bark collars?
Yes, we did, and we did purchase dog bark collars.
And, and did Ms. Tevye give you, uh, she was the Animal Control Officer for the town for a number of years, isn't that true?
That's correct.
Now, at some point, she gave you the information about the current bark collars that are on your dogs, isn't that so?
Correct.
Did you buy those?
We did.
And did Ms. Tevye have an opportunity to see them?
She did.
And did, tell us, what else did you do, uh, in way of compliance with the board's, um, outline of their decision? Just quickly tell.
Yep, they were enrolled in obedience classes, which they completed. We were put in the barn, and time workers were around. And we also installed a fence around our almost ten-acre property.
And what type of a fence did you install?
Six-foot, two-toe, ticket fence.
Okay, and you were not required to put the fence up, were you by the board?
We were not.
You did so at your own cost and in an effort to make sure that you were in compliance with the dog barking, correct?
That's correct.
And that was at a substantial cost to you, isn't that so?
That is so.
Now, drawing your attention to, um, Ms. Hedberg and Mr. Hedberg who have, have asserted that your dogs continuously bark, bark, like that's half an hour and an hour, twenty minutes. Do your dogs bark that way? Do your dogs bark that way?
At, to my knowledge, men, no dog barks.
Can they bark for a half an hour running or 45 minutes running? Can dogs do that?
They can do it for about six minutes.
Okay. And by the way, do, um, you live on a, this main drag, do you not? One of the main drags up in that area?
We.
Hello?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Do individuals with dogs come near your property?
We hear other dogs near our property, yes. We don't see them through the fence.
Okay. Do individuals from the neighborhood, the Adams Street area, that they walk near dogs in front of your house?
Yeah.
And over the time period since 2019, when all of this started, did you have occasion to call the dog officer about individuals coming on or near your property with their dogs?
I have never called the dog officer about our dogs in or near our property or barking.
Okay. Did you take pictures of dogs?
I have taken pictures and videos of dogs.
Okay. And what did, if anything, did you do with those pictures or videos? Did you show them to Ms. Peasey? Sorry, go ahead.
Yes. I emailed them to Mr. Elms or Ms. Peasey, whoever was the current dog officer at the time.
And when you emailed them or sent them, were they pictures of individuals with dogs that are near your property?
Yes.
And moving on from there, ma'am, you've had, you were able to get, and I believe you undoubtedly got them from Mr. Elms, the records of in, from at least 3/29/19 to date of complaints?
Yes.
By Hedberg's and Mr. Roy and basically Mr. and Mrs. Luke, right?
Yes, that is correct.
Now, you, you certainly were on the line here when Mr. Elms testified, isn't that so?
That is correct.
And did you have occasion, when you received, how did you receive the Animal Control Officer's records? Did you ask for them?
There was a public records request put in, and they were emailed to me, the Selectman's secretary.
Okay. And those you've submitted to, up to the board or to Mr. Elms? Hello?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Now, you do know, ma'am, isn't that, isn't it true that Mr. Elms has gone and surveilled your property after certain complaints were received? Isn't that so?
That is so.
And did you have occasion to read, on a number of occasions, that he was parked in various other individuals' driveways or areas in an attempt to see if, in fact, your dogs were consistently barking?
Yes.
Did you know he did that?
Yes, I did.
And did you know that Ms. Peasey did that?
I did.
And in fact, there were notations in those records, and they are before the board, that when Mr. Elms was there, that he did not hear what's been described as, uh, consistent, constant, crazy barking. Isn't that so?
That is so.
And I suggest, and I think you're suggesting, that the records will speak for themselves, and that Mr. Elms' surveillances on random times, random dates, from random places, did not comport with what Ms. Hedberg or Mr. Hedberg or Ms. Luke had to say. Does that be fair to say?
That is correct.
Now, are you open to getting a different kind of dog collar?
Absolutely.
And again, I'm going to ask you, your dogs constantly barking, and are they just barkers for no reason? They just bark hour after hour?
No, absolutely not.
And you, will you tell us, ma'am, have you had occasion to see and have neighbors, people from the area, coming up to or near your property and surveilling the dogs or photoing the dogs?
Yes, there, there has been numerous occasions that the neighbors have come right up on our fence and instigated our dogs.
So with, with respect to, um, I believe you sent in some videos that you procured of dogs in your yard, did you not?
Yeah.
To the board, or, did you send them to the board or to Mr. Elms?
Um, Mr. Elms has had them in the past. They were sent to the board today.
Okay. So you, uh, you wish to have those submitted as some evidences to the type of dog and how the dogs are, is that correct?
Correct.
Um, do you wish to tell the board anything?
Uh, well, I have the board emails in the past, where I've actually spent a whole 14-hour period of my time tracking the data of the barking throughout the day, because I wanted to know the exact data collection of this. And while the dogs do bark here and there throughout the day, actually 91.6% of the day is non-barking during the 10 hours that they're allowed outside.
And are there other dogs barking when they come near your dogs?
There are, and those videos have been submitted to the board as well.
And they're different dogs, isn't that so?
It is. You can see my dogs in the video just sitting, being quiet. Dogs don't, though, at that particular video, the dogs weren't stimulated by anything.
Okay. And with respect, and by the way, did you also put up any dog fencing around your property to contain the dogs?
The dogs are not only within an underground fence, but they're also in one of the pens where they stay with the livestock to keep them safe. They don't have full reign to the property, only the pen.
Okay. And when you say an underground pen, are you talking about an electric fence type of thing?
Yeah, they're on an electric collar as well as fencing.
So, and that electric collar relates to keeping them in the area as well as the bark collar, correct?
Correct. They wear two collars at all times.
Okay. Um, I, anything else you want to say to the board or to the individuals?
Um, actually, for Jane, I would like to address the 6:00 PM, when I said that the dogs were going away in March. In March, the time it was dark was 6:00 PM, and I did state they do go to the, um, the barn before dark, and that was correct. It was about 6:00 PM in the middle of winter. Um, that was, I think, the only, uh, and actually, I would like to apologize to the neighbors for the one time the dogs were let out at 5:00 AM. Our child was reprimanded for that, and it was a one-time incident, and we take full accountability for those actions. It was a singular incident, and the child has been corrected.
Okay. I think that's all we have. Running out of battery, too.
Okay. Are there any other witnesses here wishing to speak on the Springer's behalf?
I think that's it. I think we would also just rely on, or would have relied on, Mr. Elms, but he testified on the complainant's side. And again, we would just rely on those records and those, some of the assertions he had to say, that, on those random dates. Thank you. So we would, because Mr. Springer would certainly just reiterate what Mrs. Springer said.
So Mr. Elms was not testifying on behalf of the Hedberg's. It was just the order in which he was called. His testimony could have included whatever it was he wanted to say, and of course, if he has more to say, that's completely appropriate as well.
Yes, I, I just said he would testify on the, I meant on their side of the case, not.
Oh, I understand. Okay, thank you. Okay. Well, if everyone has had their chance to speak, I will ask for the, any board members that have questions that they would like to ask of either party. Hello. You're still, we can still hear you.
Okay, great.
Then I will ask, oh, go ahead, Mr. DePaolo.
Um, I guess first, could I ask a quick clarification? Is the purpose of this hearing this evening, because I'm, I'm a little bit confused, um, for us to hear that the dogs are not, or the Springers are not in compliance with the orders that, that we, um, put in place in 2019? Or is it, is it supposed to be a new complaint, and we need to make new findings? Because it, to me, it's a different set of questions, and I just want to be sure. For Mr. Cohen's letter, it looks like we're being asked to have a hearing of non, of non-compliance with the order. And I think it's, it's, I just want to be clear, because I think that I would ask different questions, given what this hearing actually is.
Mr. Medaus, hold on just a second, please. Mr. Medaus, would you be able to clarify for us?
Sure. Through the chair, Stephen Medaus, Town Council. We did receive this, the letter dated June 10th requested a hearing for non-compliance with the March 2019 order. And the town published notice of this hearing to, uh, which reads, "To consider violations of nuisance dog order relating to the two dogs in question." So, you know, what's before you is whether there's been compliance with the March 2019 order. As the board is aware, you know, we've had a few dog hearings. The board at its March hearing found the dogs to be nuisance dogs, and under the statute, if the hearing authority, which in Shrewsbury, it's the Board of Selectmen, deems a dog a nuisance dog, the hearing authority may further order that the owner or keeper of the dog take remedial action to ameliorate the cause of the nuisance or behavior. So, you know, obviously, this is an unfortunate circumstance, but the board doesn't have a cure-all authority here. Ameliorate means to, of course, make it better or more tolerable, and your March order sought to do that. So, um, as to Selectmen DePaolo's specific question, I think the March order is before you as to whether there are violations of that. But you may also consider the testimony certainly of our Animal Control Officer with the suggestion that you could consider modifying that order if it is deemed not effective, particularly to the bark collars. Otherwise, we'll just probably receive a complaint in the future. But it sounded like the owner was willing to consider a more effective bark collar. A little bit beyond my role. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Medaus.
Madam Chair.
Continue, Mr. DePaolo.
So, um, I, I am certainly, um, not suggesting at all that there hasn't been consistent barking by the Springer's dogs. I have, I have heard it myself on several occasions when I went up there just to myself aware of what was happening. So I'm not, I'm not questioning that for a minute. Um, you know, people might argue about how, how long the dogs might have been barking, but I, I believe they bark on a fairly consistent basis at the very least. But to the, I just want to be clear, and, and I guess, well, we had, we had, our order was, um, the dogs, um, had to have bark collars. Dogs had to be evaluated at, uh, for, for barking if they, if they had a, uh, a problem that they had uncontrollable barking, that, that the dogs went in the barn when they were workers on the property, and that the dogs had to be in between 7:00 and 9:00 PM. Again, I just want to be clear. I am not suggesting the dogs weren't barking, but I would like to know, um, which one of these, uh, which one of these orders was violated? And, and before we let anyone answer, um, my understanding from Animal Control Officer Elms is that he had none, he had no complaints between 9:00 PM and 7:00 PM of the dogs barking. That, that was a report that he sent to us. I also, I, I would like to ask Animal Control Officer Elms, if I could, a couple of questions about circumstances involving the order. Is he here?
I'm here.
Mr. Elms, can I, I just want to be clear. Back on, I think it was May 15th, you said you had, on the report that we got, no barking? You had no complaints of barking between 9:00 PM and 7:00? Is that correct?
At that time, I did. My latest report, June 9th, I did have, um, since that date on the 15th, I believe it was June 4th, there was that one incident where I got several voicemails, which I received Monday morning, that the dogs were let out between, uh, sometime between 5:00 and 7:00 AM.
Okay. That doesn't.
Again, I was not, I was not working at that time. I, I, while I don't doubt it may have happened, I did not personally verify it at that time. I suggested to the residents in the future, if that were to happen, any after-hours barking, call the police department and have it logged. That way, we can have a record of it, of it occurring.
Okay. But I think what we heard, um, from, from both parties tonight is that there was, there was that one incident.
Correct.
The bark collars. When, whenever you went to the property, did the dogs not have the bark collars? Or did they have them on and they just weren't affected?
They've always had them on. Anytime I've ever, I've ever been up there and asked the Springers to, um, to check if the dogs were wearing the collars. They were on. Melinda had even shown me where she's trimmed fur down to get better contact with the collar to the dog.
Okay. And as far as the, with the issue with uncontrolled barking, um, did you get a report, or I, I guess, Ms. Pease might have gotten a report, I forget on the timing, that dogs were evaluated and the trainer said, uh, what did the trainer say, I guess? I'm not going to.
I actually have the letter here. It was from a Joyce Manning, and she said she worked with them for eight weeks and saw no troublesome behaviors. And that was dated June 12th of 2019.
Okay. And, and then, I guess the last question is, um, have, have you been on the property when workers were on site and the dog, not, not the gentleman who, who lives there and does some work around there? Contractors were on the site and the dogs were left out and were barking?
I, I've never personally been up there when there's been, um, anything like landowners or other outdoor contractors working. No, just, I've never been up there in response to a complaint, observed that on the property. Um, no, but I would say no.
Thank you. So I, I guess, Madam Chair, my point is, although our orders obviously do not appear to have been effective, particularly with the bark collars, maybe, perhaps we could have written orders that were more specific, but we do not have evidence except for... But we do not have evidence except for, it looks like one time between 7:00 and 9:00 that the Springer's did not comply with the order. Again, I've been up there, I've heard the dogs barking, I know it. I see Mr. Cohen shaking his head, and I'd like to hear from him. But I don't see where and what we put in the order that the Springer's didn't do. Again, the dogs bark, and they bark, I think, on a fairly regular basis. I don't think, I certainly don't dispute that. I don't see where we could have cited the Springer's for noncompliance based on what we wrote. Perhaps we could have written it better and stronger. I don't see that they've been in noncompliance, not cooperative and box quiet. But certainly, they did what we asked them to do, or we ordered them to do. So, I'd like to hear from Mr. Cohen, because I'd like to hear, understand where these statements that were in his letter come from.
Thank you.
Mr. Cohen? Would you like to respond?
Sure. So, a couple of things. As you'll see in the letter that I sent today, I have told the board that these people would suspend the actions of imposing the penalties and fines if the board would impose better, different, and more sophisticated orders. At the same time, the trainer, you know, you ordered this training. And so, we get this letter, it's unsigned, it's not on letterhead. I can't find a Joyce Manning within 100 miles who's a registered trainer. I couldn't find her in Hollywood, California. I can't find a phone number, a name, she's not on the internet. Her email didn't work. I'd like to know who verified this? And clearly, who verified that this actually, the training took place? I also don't see a receipt for this.
Well, Mr. Cohen, this is the first, we've heard that you said this person doesn't exist.
Well, this is, I got it today, was the first time. Now, I asked for these records two months ago, and I just got the records today, the guy, Joyce Manning. So, that's why you're hearing for the first time. But if you want to find a way not to fix this, that's fine. Then don't fix it.
Mr. Cohen, Mr. Cohen, Mr. Cohen, do not, Mr. Cohen, do not misrepresent what I said. What I said was, I don't doubt the dogs are barking. But you made accusations in your letter that the board did not enforce an order. And the order that was written, whether it was written well or not, has been followed. We do need to try to address the situation. But don't say that we have not been enforcing our order, because the order has not been violated, except for ones that can be documented. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes. Let's keep in mind that we need to keep our comments respectful, and that everyone is here with the best of intentions to help solve an issue between the two parties. Are there any other questions from the board? Please remember that if you are on a cellphone, you're going to need to push star six to unmute, as we needed to mute some of the lines that were causing some background interference. Okay. If there are no further, Mr. LeBeau.
Madam Chairman, I have a process item that, I really don't want to disrupt the flow of the content, but I don't want to lose my opportunity. So, I would simply ask that, and it can wait, that before you ask for a vote to close the hearing, you then allow me to ask a question. But I don't think it's important, but I don't think it's germane to the main context. So, I just ask that, I don't know if there are other things to talk about.
Yeah, I think we're pretty close. I mean, that was my next, if I don't hear from any other members of the board with questions, it would be to close the hearing. So, why don't you go ahead, Mr. LeBeau?
So, forgive me to all parties. Counselor Cohen, I need to ask you a couple of questions. In your very introductory remarks, you made reference to both the U.S. Department of Agriculture and the Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources. And why I'm, you know, I feel that I'm kind of biting into everybody's time. I'm employed by the Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources. And if indeed, we do have authority here, I need to recuse myself. I am totally unaware of any kind of authority the Mass Department of Agricultural Resources has relative to Mass General Law, Chapter 140, Section 157, relative to nuisance dogs or dangerous dogs. So, could you kindly enlighten me? I mean, if I'm, you know, if I'm failing to take something into account, I would appreciate your guidance, so I don't potentially find myself in an ethics issue.
Mr. Cohen, could you respond, please?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. LeBeau. So, the reason that I brought up the M D A R in the, well, mostly the M D A R, is because part of the paperwork that was submitted to me today from Ms. Springer was that she's protected by this right to farm. So, when I go to the Department of Agricultural Resources website, under farming, agriculture, farming, and nuisance, because she said she's protected against any type of nuisance, and you go to nuisance, you click that link, right to farm, generally accepted practices, you click on that link, it brings you to Mass General Law, Chapter 243, the tort of nuisance, and it speaks to people who are engaged in the farming, who still somehow are committing the tort of a nuisance. So, the, I don't know if the M D A R itself would investigate this, but this is what the M D A R shared with anybody online who goes to the website.
Well, I would like to say for the record, we have no authority relative to nuisance or cruelty dogs. I don't believe I have a conflict. And also, that a town must adopt a right to farm bylaw through legislative action. And I'm unaware that the town of Shrewsbury has taken that action.
I believe, sir, you are correct. Closest place I think is West Boylston.
So, thank you. I just, I very much needed to get that on the record. I did not want to have any appearance of a conflict or a statement that led to a conflict. Thank you very much for your clarification, sir.
All right. I agree, we are not a right to farm community. We don't have that bylaw here in Shrewsbury. Any other comments from board members before I ask for a motion to close the hearing?
Madam Chair, could I ask one question?
Yes, Mr. Samia.
This is to the Springer's, through you, also to their council. It's just a conceptual question. So, I've heard your testimony. How do you explain or reconcile the differences of opinions where there's logs of daily barking for multiple hours versus, you don't hear that? Or is there such a discrepancy? Or how would you explain it?
Melinda? She might be gone, sir.
Okay, no problem.
Sorry, I was sidetracked. What is my perception of the discrepancy?
Yeah, because we've heard testimony from both sides. So, just, just thought, just so I understand how you view that such a difference of opinion.
I believe it to be just that, it's an opinion. They, according to their own testimony, have zero tolerance with any noise. They want a neighborhood that has zero dog barking, which isn't really feasible when you have neighbors and you live in society with other people. So, I believe every time my dogs bark, it probably drives them insane. So, it might be two times or three times a day, and it just resonates with them. So, do I think my dogs bark? Yeah, I've provided the data, because data collection would be great with this. And I know that they bark practically, like practically throughout the day. And I just think that when you're so intolerant, that it just hits you harder.
And one, okay, thank you. One follow-up question, just a related question to that, though. Understanding intermittent barks, but what I've heard is from several people in multiple households of long periods of barking. So, I understand if there were a couple of barks, a belief of intolerance. But how is it recorded over multiple hours, over multiple days, by multiple people? How is that different?
So, this is really funny, because once you sent out all the butter letters, realtors and neighbors of Adam's farm reached out to me to let me know what an intolerant, like, community it is, and they all gang up on anyone that doesn't fit their, so their own residents have reached out to me to let me know that they've bullied people within their community as well. So, I'm not part of the mold that they want as a neighbor, and I apologize for that. But, I mean, you lie for your friends, I guess, to gain your own, like, agenda. It really doesn't.
Ms. Springer? I don't know if you were able to hear the rest of her comment. I was not. But I think that she's, I think that she's now muted. Mr. Samia, was your question answered sufficiently? Or did you want me to try to get Ms. Springer back?
I get the gist of it. So, thank you.
All right, very good.
Madam Chair.
Mr. DePaolo?
If Ms. Springer is still part of this discussion, I would, well, I guess, first, I'd like to make a comment. Or no, I guess my question is, what, Ms. Springer, what do you consider to be a reasonable amount of time, either total hours of the day, or in terms of consistent barking, that you think would, is, should be considered acceptable to people who are your neighbors?
I believe this was addressed in the March hearing, where the resident said 30 minutes of consecutive barking was an acceptable amount of time. If you're, yes, 2020 bark log, where I actually spent 14 hours watching on surveillance, they have 96% of their day was barking. And that doesn't, I believe that would be an acceptable amount of time.
I'm sorry, Ms. Springer, I don't know if anybody else heard, but I heard, I heard part of it about the, the log that she kept. I didn't hear what, I'm sorry, I just didn't hear what you said about what you think is a reasonable amount of time.
So, if you refer to the bark log, where I spent 14 hours of my day making, the longest time that they barked consecutively?
Sure, whatever.
Was like five minutes. But it was like 60, 70 barks in five minutes.
Okay. So, I did actually, I spent some time looking at that, and I actually plotted it out, and I agree with you on that day. It seemed, there were some periods of time where they barked a little bit longer than that. Unfortunately, I would have liked to seen a, maybe a week, and I know that's a tremendous amount of effort to get that information. But I have been down there. And I was down there, I think it was last week, it may have been the week before, and I heard those dogs barking consistently for a half an hour. And I'm a dog owner, and I can tolerate dogs barking. But I, I know that those dogs were barking for a good half an hour, both dogs. And it, it couldn't stop. Now, do you consider that to be reasonable?
You're telling that every single minute of 30 minutes, the dogs were barking without...
Of course, they couldn't have every single minute, but it was consistent, it didn't stop. They'd take a breath and they'd start again. Let's not try to pass words. I heard those dogs were consistently barking. And I was down there this morning, and I can tell you, I only heard them bark for two or three minutes, and they stopped. And I was down there for a half an hour. So, I understand that they're not always barking from sunup to sundown. But in my mind, if dogs are barking pretty consistently for, for sessions of five, 10 minutes, and then a break for five or 10 minutes, and barking again for five or 10 minutes consistently throughout the day, in my opinion, that would be fairly consistent, and I think that that would be unreasonable. And are you suggesting that that's not?
We actually have our audio and video surveillance at all times, so I can go back and track. I've also shared my username and password, not only with the Selectmen Board, but also the officers, so that that's not, that's not normal.
Ms. Springer, you're breaking up.
Why?
It's very, it's a little challenging to hear you.
So, not only have I shared my username and password of all of my surveillance systems, if the dogs are barking consistently for more than, if there's an issue, either the livestock are in harm's way, there's a hawk, there's a coyote, we have all sorts of wildlife running through, we have the neighbors up on our fence all the time, riling them up. This is not a good, for anybody at this point.
Okay. Okay. I guess, I don't have any other questions at this, at this, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, if I, if the board is set, I will take a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, vote, Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DePaolo?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mrs. Cassavant, aye. So, we'll now move into an opportunity for the board to have some deliberations. I would ask that if you're not speaking right now, could you please mute your device? Because you making noise triggers your camera feed, and it's sometimes a little challenging to hear. Thank you. Okay, board members, let's take this time to answer, discuss among ourselves, any comments, questions related to what we've just heard.
Madam Chair.
Mr. DePaolo?
I would like to, again, ask Attorney Madouse, in regards to the way this hearing was set up, is our first, is our first action to decide whether or not the Springer's were in violation of the orders from last spring?
Through the chair, yes, I think you should dispose of that issue, because that was the topic of the publication for the hearing, and pursuant to the letter that we received, to consider violations of the nuisance dog order relative to these two dogs. So, yes, you should dispose of that claim or allegation, whichever way the board finds having heard all the testimony.
Okay, Madam Chair, but if I may just follow up. And within, within the confines of the structure of the hearing, are we allowed, if we so desire, to impose additional orders? Based on what we heard this evening?
Through the, if I may, through the chair. So, the statute is rather uncertain as to appeals by the complainant of an order. You know, certainly, the dog owner or the dog keeper has a right under the statute to appeal an order to the district court. So, the only avenue left for the abutters, if you will, or the complainants, is to come back before this board, because I don't think the district court has jurisdiction on that. So with that, I would say, yes, you may modify your existing order if you find it necessary based on the hearing we had tonight. As the chair read at the, she read potential actions the board might consider following the hearing, I thought those were all appropriate. You might find that your order was sufficient, again, knowing that the standard is that you may, which you did at your March hearing, order that the owner or keeper of the dog take remedial action to ameliorate the cause of the nuisance behavior. Or you may find that your order needs to be amended, modified pursuant to the hearing we had, because we had both parties giving sworn testimony pursuant to a published hearing. So I think you can do that if you find that necessary, modify your order. I would not issue a new order, but modify, because the only matter that was before us was the March 2019 order.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from board members? All right.
Madam Chairman, well, I was hoping to hear from other members first, but in my opinion, unfortunately, because this situation does not seem to have corrected itself, I believe that the Springers did follow the order as it was written the best that they could. I think we should, I think we need to make a couple of modifications, at least one modification. And I don't know if the rest of the board wants to think about this for a week before we do anything, or if the other members are ready to move forward. But I guess to be, I'm not sure how to do this. I want to make sure that I don't inadvertently make a motion that's going to negate a follow-up motion that I would make. So I guess again, to counsel, can we find that the Springers did follow the orders as they were written in 2019? However, we would like to make modifications to the order, but do we have to vote first and then make modifications to the order, Mr. Madouse? I'm just confused. I don't want to do something and find out that legally one negated the other.
Mr. Madouse?
Yeah, thank you. I think you could do that in a two-step process, Selectman DiPaolo. I think one of the selectmen could propose a motion to make a finding that, having held the hearing, the board found either violations or no violations of the nuisance dog order issued on March 13, 2019. And then a second motion could be proposed, having held the hearing and taken testimony, the board finds it necessary to modify the March 13, 2019 order as follows, and whatever that, and that modification, that the owner would have the right to appeal that to the district court. So you could do it in a two-step process, a consideration by the board.
Okay, thank you. Madam Chairman, I guess I'd like to hear what other board members think.
Right. Also, I was waiting to... Go ahead, Mr. Kane.
Madam Chairman, I'd echo the comments of my colleague. Mr. DiPaolo just nailed it relative to his observation regarding the first question and a desire for a two-step process. So to the extent I can move that along with my colleagues, I'd like to offer such motions to do so.
So we have some motions from Mr. Kane. So we're talking about the two-step process, so we'll have to start by finding, deciding whether or not there was a violation. Am I correct, Mr. Madouse?
Yes, of the March order, the 2019 order, because that's what this hearing was advertised for, that's what testimony was given, and you need to make a determination on that question.
So I think we need, I'm not sure that Mr. Kane's motion was a motion. We have to take them separate, so... I would need someone to make... Mr. Kane?
The council offered two motions, if you will, for conversation. Without trying to echo his exact comments, I would ask him to restate his first motion relative to the question at hand.
Mr. Madouse?
Okay, thank you. I'm assuming for Mr. Kane, the motion would be the board, having held the hearing and taken testimony, finds that there has been no violation of the order relative to the nuisance dogs issued by the board on March 13, 2019 to Melinda Springer.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. That was my first desired motion. I don't think there's been a violation to this order. I think what we have is an order that simply isn't playing out as we had all hoped in the reality of life. So I'll offer that first motion to deal with the immediate question at hand.
Second.
I don't have a motion and a second, any discussion further on this from the board? Not seeing anything, I'll take a roll call vote. Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo.
Aye.
Mr. Kane.
Aye.
Myself, aye. Okay, that brings us to the second motion that was outlined by town council, which would be to modify the 31319 order. Mr. Madouse, did you have it? Do you have something more official that we can use?
I think it would, similar, the board, having held the public hearing and received testimony, finds it necessary to modify the order it issued on March 13, 2019 to Melinda Springer relative to the nuisance dogs. And I'm assuming, I don't, but I don't know what the board's will is on this. The modification would be to require bark callers more effective as deemed appropriate by our animal control officer, or something to that effect. But that's just an assumption on my part. I don't want to assume which way the board was going, but that was my take.
Yes, that's my take as well, and I think Mr. Sam... Sure, Mr. Kane, and then Mr. Samia.
No, I'll step back. I did not hear John. Go ahead, John.
The only question I have, if I can, just for clarification, regarding another bark control collar, I'm looking at the animal control officer's report from June 9, and just a question, besides another bark control collar, or how many types of bark control collars are there or similar devices? What options are there that can limit a dog's ability to bark?
Mr. Elms, if you're still here to answer that question?
I'm still here. I mean, there are bark callers with different modes of action. I mean, there are ones that elicit a sound, one that elicits a small electronic stimulation. There are ones that will dispense products such as citronella to control the barking. Then, on the other hand, there are ultrasonic devices which are not worn by the dog, but can be placed in the proximity of the dog, which help control that collar, that barking from ultrasonic.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Mr. DiPaolo.
So if I may, Mr. Elms, so understanding that there are other, perhaps more effective callers, have you made a recommendation as to what you think would be most effective? You don't, I... Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I mean, in my opinion, I had laid it out initially for kind of thirty days, get something in place, or see how it works. We may, given everything, we could have a bit shorter of a period, maybe fourteen to twenty-one days, or, you know, the Springers get something in place, we can evaluate how it works and see how effective it's been in that time.
I understand that, but what are we going to recommend? Because I think we need to give them some direction, because obviously, the direction that we gave the last time did not prove to be effective. Do you know of one that would be effective? Or do you want, would you recommend that they... Lack of better expression. They bring an alternative to you, and you evaluate it? Are you going to prescribe it or approve it, I guess?
I mean, I guess based on the fact that the ones that are currently being used aren't effective, I mean, I wouldn't feel comfortable prescribing a specific one and having that being back at square one. I mean, I think it may be better to take that maybe fourteen-day period, work with them, and find something that can actually be effective, you know, controlling any excessive barking.
Okay, thank you. But I guess, Madam Chairman, to Attorney Madouse, can we, can we, can we put an order to that effect that, you know, animal control officer needs to work with the Springers and come up with a satisfactory collar or solution to the barking? Or does it need to be something more specific?
Well, specific is always preferred, right? Because we're kind of delegating over what the order will be. But in this instance, I mean, I think, I think we have a cooperative owner. And we don't, either that, we could, we could hold the order until we do get a specific product, you know, that the animal control officer is going to investigate it and come back, you know, with the owners, and then the order would be issued pursuant to that. But to answer your question, if we issue it with, and it's a technology to be determined, the owner could appeal that as being vague, right? And a delegation of your authority to, but I'm hopeful that's not going to happen, because we're working with them to find a solution. So...
I have a question for you, and maybe also to the board. I did hear somewhere in our conversation of potentially, we made the determination that the order was being followed, but could we put off our changes or amendments to the order to a meeting at a later date, say next week, to give us an opportunity to think through the best way to ameliorate the issue? I'm not sure if that's permissible, or if that's even something the board would want to consider.
Well, we've closed the public hearing.
I don't need to interrupt, but could you just suspend this secondary vote for fourteen days and give some time for Mr. Elms to look into this in a more in-depth manner? You know, like, maybe the size of the dogs are an issue, or more electric, or I have no idea, but I just thought something like that, a suspension for the moment, suspension of your vote. I don't know if that's permissible.
Mr. Madouse?
Well, I'm not aware in the statute that there's a timeframe for issuing the order, you know, like there are for ZBAs and planning boards. So you could continue the meeting, I think, for issuing your decision, your modification. But I'm... I think my preference would be that we reopen the public hearing and continue it to a date and time certain, where you're going to get that language that you need for issuing the order, the modified order. I'm concerned if we continue it to another meeting without notice, or without telling them the date and time, and they don't attend, that...
No, I understand, and that's why I wanted to ask you. Here's where I am, my thinking is, is that we need to have an effective dog bark collar. And there, and I'm also thinking, also as the animal control officer mentioned in his findings, when the Springers are away, there seems to be an increase in the barking. And so a pet sitter or some other individual responsible for making sure that the orders are still being followed in the Springer's absence would need to be named in any order going forward. So those are the two things that I think need to be included in the next order, that, any sort of changes we make to the order. Whether we do that tonight, I'm fine with that. It's just we aren't able to provide a specific bark collar, because we are unaware of which bark collar is the right one to work on for the dogs.
I'm going to go up, I mean, this is, again, the statute doesn't provide any guidance on this, but I think you could continue this matter to, I don't know what your next scheduled meeting is.
It's next Tuesday.
So that may not be enough time? Would it be the...
Then we have one the following Tuesday, also the 28th.
I don't know what the, how much time the dog, the animal control officer might need to supply us with a specific product? If that...
Mr. Elms?
I think if it's possible, maybe, I don't know the schedule, but in my opinion, maybe a week for, a week for them to obtain a collar, and then two weeks to evaluate how effective it is, and, you know, make a determination from that point.
But we were wondering how long it would take for you to provide the board with a collar option?
Oh, I can have that by, I would say, by, by next week.
All right, so if, if Mr. Elms is able to provide us with a collar option by next week, couldn't we go ahead and amend the order to include the collar as determined by the animal control officer? Or is that still not specific enough?
Tonight?
Yes.
Yes, yes, that was along the lines of my original motion, as a product as determined by the animal control officer. And Selectman DiPaolo was asking, is that not specific enough? But...
Other board members want to weigh in? Oh, Mr. DiPaolo?
Could we, could we do it? A collar prescribed by the animal control officer by, or presented to the board by July 28, or whatever that meeting is, two weeks from now? I think we need to get some closure to this. So I wouldn't want to leave it open-ended, because I do think there's a problem with the barking. I think two weeks should be plenty of time. And then I'm wondering if, if there's something in terms of follow-up that would be put in the hands of the animal control officer as far as, I don't know, addressing violations? Or, you know, if it's, if it's not, if it's not being worked on, can we authorize the animal control officer to, if it came to that, to write, to issue tickets for, as they would for other animal control incidents?
I would...
I don't think so.
Okay. So then, just hear my motion, and then we can see if it, if it makes, if it makes sense. I move that we amend the March 13, 19 order of the Board of Selectmen to include... I move that we amend the March 13, 19, order of the Board of Selectmen to include a new bark collar as deemed appropriate by the Animal Control Officer and presented to the board by July 28. I don't know if that wording's right, but is there a way to do that? Is that, does that work?
Do you want, do you want to just continue your deliberations to July 28?
Sure.
On what the order will be, and then we'll have a report back from the Animal Control Officer?
Sure.
To draft the appropriate, could we ask the, if the owner will cooperate with our Animal Control Officer in determining the appropriate?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, can you, so what are we doing? We're continuing the deliberations to a date certain?
Yes.
Right, but not the hearing, just the deliberations.
Right.
You close the hearing, you're going to deliberate on the order that you're going to issue.
So we'll add this to our agenda for July 28.
Yeah, and everyone that's at this hearing is aware of the new date.
Okay. So then I would make a motion that we continue deliberations on amending the March 13, 2019 dog order to July 28, 2020.
Second.
No further discussion. Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DePaolo?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Ms. Cassavant, aye. So the motion carries, and we will continue this to the July 28 meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you, good evening. That brings us to number 12, item 12 under New Business, to review an act on the town manager's reappointment of John Ostrowski, 16 Colton Lane, to the Conservation Commission for a three-year term to expire on June 30, 2023 pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 8(c).
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DePaolo?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Item number 13, review an act on the town manager's reappointment of J. Kevin Samara, 274 South Street, to the Historical Commission for a three-year term to expire on June 30, 2023 pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 8d.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DePaolo?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Ms. Cassavant, aye. Item number 14, review an act on the appointment of one member to the Historic District Commission for a three-year term to expire on June 30, 2023. Board members, we had two people apply, both very strong applicants. We're, the board is always grateful when people apply for these positions and offer to share their time and their talents with the community. Unfortunately, we can only choose to appoint one. So I will entertain a motion. Yes, Mr. Kane?
I've had the privilege of knowing Kelly Barna for several years, and I've seen her get involved in various efforts, work hard at them, and do so in a very, if you will, committed but yet fair fashion. So I would nominate her for this position.
Mr. Kane has nominated Kelly Barna. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Samia?
I just wanted to add, I had an opportunity to speak with both candidates, and while I think they would both be excellent candidates for this position, I support Mr. Kane's motion here and also support Ms. Barna's appointment. Thank you.
Okay. Roll call vote. Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DePaolo?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Ms. Cassavant, aye. Item number 15. Yes, Mr. Kane?
As we often do, could we ask that the manager speak to the other applicant for this position and see if there are other upcoming openings to which she may have a level of interest?
Definitely. Mr. Mizakar, thank you for doing that. Item number 15 is to review an act to authorize the chair to sign a letter of authorization to extend the intramunicipal animal control agreement with Westboro and Grafton for a period of one year, to expire June 30, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote. Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DePaolo?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Ms. Cassavant, aye. Item number 16 is to review an act on the establishment of a Diversity Discrimination and Racism Task Force and review an act on a charge.
Madam Chair?
Mr. DePaolo?
Given that it's almost 10 o'clock and we started at 6:30, and I'm sure this is going to take some discussion, I'd like to recommend that, that we hold this item until either the 21st or the 28th, when we can give it adequate time to have a good discussion on it, and instead of trying to get it done tonight and try to get, try to get it finished before 11 o'clock.
Mr. DePaolo, I appreciate your comment. We did start this meeting at 6:30, knowing that the agenda was very lengthy with a lot of long meetings and hearings. I agree. I think it's very important that we put the time that's necessary into forming this committee and addressing the issues at hand. I'm not certain that our next few meetings are going to be any shorter. However, I, I agree with what you're saying, because I would rather give this the attention and have a robust discussion as a board when we're not feeling like it's 10 minutes to 10 at night. Other board members? Does anyone oppose?
Well said, Madam Chairman.
Mr. LeBeau?
I am totally, I mean, we want to do this right, and after three-plus hours, this is not the right time to address it.
Yes. Okay. I agree with, with all those statements. So, Mr. Mizakar, let's look at when this would better fit on an agenda, when it could get the attention that it deserves. I know that it's time-sensitive, and I think we're all feeling like we want to get started on this, but unfortunately, if we are to rush it and not do it correctly, it's worse than moving it to a different meeting. So let's move on to correspondence. Item number 17 is a letter dated June 19, 2020 from Carol Billings, 36 North Quincy Gemin Ave, regarding current events and situations. She was describing racial injustice and asking for our town to respond, and we are trying to do so. Email, item number 18 is an email dated June 22, 2020, from Jennifer Harsho, 14C Farmington Drive, regarding 2020, 2021 Shrewsbury School proposed budget cuts. I just would like to say that there have been ongoing meetings with two members of our Board of Selectmen, Selectman DePaolo and Selectman Samia, Town Manager Mizakar, with Superintendent Sawyer and Assistant Superintendent Collins, and members of, two members of the school committee working on the upcoming school budget. We are all very much aware of the pressures that the school budget is under, pre-COVID and also post-COVID, and this board is committed to finding a solution to the, in the best, to the best of our abilities, to the issues facing the schools and their budget for the coming year, and that we are working together, both boards, to come to some sort of plan for the coming year and the years that follow. Item number 19 is an email dated June 23, 2020, from Bridget Hilton, 1 Jacobson Drive, and Sanam Zaire, 8 Jamie Lane, and Elizabeth Hilton, 123 Bumblebee Circle, regarding the Anti-Racism Task Force recommendations and comments on our June 23 discussions, so noted. Item number 19. Yes, Mr. LeBeau?
Very quickly, I mean, it's obvious that the writers of item 19 did not agree with some of the points that I, I think I initially expressed two meetings ago, and there's certainly, I mean, that's their, that's their right to have those opinions. The only point I want to make is in item two, I did not suggest, and I don't think any board member suggested, that the census data be utilized to determine the makeup of the task force. I know what I said was that I think it would be important for all parties to take a look at that. And I never suggested that we would form the task force by the proportions in the U.S. Census, but I do think it is a tool to show us the makeup of the town of Shrewsbury. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Item number 20 is a letter dated June 23, 2020, from Stephen Madoustown Council regarding the disclosure of litigation matter involving other clients of Miracle Connell. Item number 21 is an email dated June 25, 2020, from Bridget Hilton, 1 Jacobson Drive, Sanam Zaire, 8 Jamie Lane, and Elizabeth Hilton, 123 Bumblebee Circle, regarding collaboration with other municipalities in Massachusetts. This was a letter requesting that our board and the school committee collaborate with other municipalities by signing on to an open letter addressed to Governor Baker, Speaker DeLeo, and Senate President Spilka, advocating for full funding of state aid. Board members, I have two reasons why I am not planning to sign on to this letter. This board continually seeks ways to collaborate with other municipalities and enjoys a strong working relationship with our state representative Hannah Kane and our state Senator Michael Moore, both of whom continually advocate for the residents of Shrewsbury for, at the state level. At some point, it came to my attention that my name was signed to this letter, which is in the form of a Google Doc by someone other than me, and I hesitate to sign on to any letter that can be so easily manipulated by anyone able to submit the Google form. Had it not come to my attention, my signature would have been included on this letter without my knowledge or consent, and before this matter was taken up by our board in open session. Recently, I've noticed an increase in the correspondence coming in the form of a Google Doc, and while I encourage residents to reach out to this board, given my recent experience, I will now be much more skeptical, skeptical of documents with large numbers of signatories that come to us in this format. Any other comments from my colleagues on signing on to this?
Madam Chair?
Mr. DePaolo?
I agree with your statement that we're always working with our elected state officials. We also work through MMA and a variety of other municipal organizations to advocate for our cause, and personally, there were one or two items on that that I would not feel comfortable signing on to. So, but more to the point, we are working with our elected officials all the time, and I think we're effective at it, and I don't think this is necessary. So I agree with you.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman?
Madam Chairman?
Yep, Mr. LeBeau?
Madam Chairman, I think your remarks were spot-on. Thank you.
Mr. Kane?
Again, I will echo that comment specifically. I will also just advise that, thank you for mentioning that, because I was recently told how I had signed on to a various number of other documents as a certain way, and I never signed my name a certain way other than a specific way in a town document. So I would just tell all of us, pay attention to what you see out there. When I thought this person was just wrong, perhaps they were not. I found one document that clearly I did not sign. So given your, your, your own finding and your swift and appropriate action, I would just caution other members of the board to pay attention if all of a sudden there's a Jack LeBeau out there that John did not sign.
Item number two is an email dated June 29, 2020, from State Representative Hannah Kane regarding the state spending bill update. Item number 23 is an email dated June 29, 2020, from Naomi Halpern, 131 Stony Hill Road, regarding a legal way for our town to protect us from wireless radiation, so noted. Item number 24 is an email dated June 30, 2020, from State Representative Hannah Kane regarding the expanding, expanded voting legislation and Chapter 90 funding that was enacted. Item number 25, an email dated June 30, 2020, from Tanu Basu, Director of the India Association of Greater Boston, Heo Box 1345 Burlington, requesting your permission to hoist the Indian flag to commemorate India's Independence Day. Board members, I did send an email to the author of this letter and was connected with her through Ashish Kuralji, the president of our India Society of Worcester, and Ashish and I will be working to understand exactly what Ms. Basu is asking and where in town. She's looking to hold this gathering. You may know that India Day is typically celebrated at the beginning of August, but because of the inability to gather in large groups, the India Association of Greater Boston is looking to host smaller celebrations outdoors in communities throughout the Commonwealth to sort of take the place of the one larger celebration, and so Shrewsbury was chosen as a location. However, we don't have a flagpole on the common, and so we will be working to come up with a solution to the request. And I will keep this board posted. Item number 26 is a letter dated June 30, 2020, from Elizabeth Hilton, 123 Bumblebee Circle, and Sanam Zaire, 8 Jamie Lane, regarding the new wayfinding signs in Shrewsbury. They are asking that the Board of Selectmen reach out to the NITMOK leaders for input into the designs of the wayfinding signs that were presented at our last meeting. We definitely appreciate the intent of the letter. However, in July 2019, a committee was formed through the Planning Department, using a public process to call for members interested in serving. The committee held numerous public meetings and asked for public input and utilized grant money to work with a design consultant to create a template for the signs, which is what we were looking at at our last meeting. There was a certain budget allocated through the grant, and that money has since been exhausted. There was only funding to take us through the design process, and no signs are being purchased or installed at this time, as there is not funding to move ahead. So while I do appreciate the letter and the intent behind the letter, unfortunately, we are unable to go back into that process as the funding is exhausted and the process is complete. Item number 27 is a letter dated July 1, 2020, from Christopher Mena, Town Moderator, to Sandra Wright, Town Clerk, regarding the Personnel Board reappointment of Robert Cashman. Item number 28 is an email dated July 1, 2020, from Ashkak Jakati for Nelson Point Road, is a request for a streetlight. If I could ask staff to review the request, please. Item number 29 is an email dated July 20, July 2, 2020, from Jessica Singer, 14-point 2, 14-2-point road regarding a dangerous intersection. She's referring to the intersection at Lake Ave and Route 9. If we could possibly refer this to Mass DOT to look at signal timing, I think that would be helpful. I'm not sure if that was readjusted once the road was reopened from the construction related to the Beal School. Item 30 is an email dated July 2, 2020, from James Fona, Fire Chief, regarding the 2020 Assistance to Firefighters Grant Supplemental Program, which was mentioned in announcements, which seems like a really long time ago. So to remind people, it was a grant led by Shrewsbury, where Westboro and Northboro will also be benefiting from monies to purchase PPE related to COVID. Item 31, a letter dated July 3, 2020, from James and Sheri S.B., 24 Patriot Lane, regarding the public hearing on July 14 for alleged violations of nuisance dog orders. Item 32, a letter dated July 4, 2020, from Robert Luke, 28 Patriot Lane, regarding barking dogs at 47 Memorial Drive. Bad for my health. Item number 33, an email dated July 5, 2020, from Jane and Ed Hedberg, 34 Patriot Lane, regarding violations of orders of a barking dog at 47 Memorial Drive. Item 34, a letter dated July 6, 2020, from Christopher Mena, Town Moderator, regarding Finance Committee appointments, is the reappointment of Hannah Kane and the appointment of Carlos Garcia to fill the vacancy left when Patrick Pitney resigned his position to take on the role he is currently serving as Chair of the Police and Municipal Campus Building Committee. Item number 35, an email... Item number 35, an email dated July 7th, 2020 from Mark Riordan, 33 Spruce Street, regarding the intersection of Lake Street and Route 9 being dangerous. Item number 36, an email dated July 9th, 2020 from James Fona, Fire Chief, regarding new Engine 1 update. Should be at headquarters by September 1st. And an item number 37 is a letter dated July 9th, 2020 from Gail Eslenian, Shrewsbury Garden Club, regarding the scarecrows on the Common. Gail is asking for our thoughts. Given that Spirit of Shrewsbury has mainly been canceled for this year due to the pandemic, she's asking what we think about still hosting, the garden club still hosting their scarecrows on the Common. Mr. Mizikar, would you be able to ask for a public health recommendation on this? And then we will be able to get back to Ms. Eslenian. And that, my colleagues, concludes this agenda. So I, if there's nothing else to come before the board in open session, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DePaolo?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Ms. Cassavan, aye. Thank you very much.
Nice job, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, good night. Go get some rest, everyone.